As Paul's suggesting for perhaps them to go through it afterwards to make sure everyone's in line with.
My, my answer, my question is, all these waivers, we're gonna have to answer to our borrowers now. I would like attorney Haverty to explain why should we give those waivers? And what's the, what's the legal legality of it? So this is our question and now because all these waivers and we have all the borrowers and the neighbors gonna say, why you giving them a waiver on this? Why do we, I would like it to hear from your attorney, why we do we have to give this waiver?
Well.
Because if you explain more the chapter forty B for the neighbors, that's all.
Sure, absolutely. So the way the chapter forty B works is an applicant is allowed to come before Board of Appeals and get what is known as a comprehensive permit. What that means is that that the permit is a master permit that subsumes all other local permitting processes. The Board of Appeals acts as the Board of Health under local Board of Health requirements. They act as the Conservation Commission under local wetlands bylaws. And, you know, any other local permitting requirement, the permit is being granted by the Board of Appeals as part of this application. In addition to that, the applicant is allowed to request waivers. In fact, we'll generally be requesting waivers of local rules and regulations that are necessary to construct the project as proposed. And again, we've, we've kept the waiver requests as minimal as we can. But this is what is necessary to do this project as it is proposed. And because the town is not at its 10% affordable housing requirements, the, the town is essentially at risk for this type of project. And really does not have much in the way of ability to deny a project under chapter forty B because it doesn't meet that minimum housing standard. If the board were to impose a condition, a decision that contained conditions that my client determines render the project uneconomic, or if the board were to deny waivers in the decision itself necessary to construct the project, then my client has the ability to appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee, which is generally going to rule in the favor of the applicant. Which is why it's always best for a board to really work with the applicant and get the projects designed to a means that is best suitable for the town, for the board, but is going to issue a decision that approves it with reasonable conditions that don't render the project uneconomic.
All right, very, I'm glad you clarified this. Okay, so that being said, can you put that, it's too bad we don't have that list. Can you put that list up, Ken?
I have questions on this matter.
Yes, yeah, everybody will, I will get to talk, just give us a second. Jimmy, did you, I'm sorry, Jimmy, did you wanna say something?
I, I do, I'm just, I just wanna be clear, I wanna, I, I listened to Paul carefully. Where I'm, and I'm asking this question genuinely, but also on behalf of, of a lot of neighbors that might be listening. This is a hard thing for people to grasp and understand. If I understand the process, before this applicant came to the town, they've already been to the state, they've already been over our heads, so to speak. This has already been approved on the state level. It, 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 just nod, you don't have to answer me, Paul, if I'm kinda getting it.
No, you're absolutely correct. Before an applicant can come to the Board of Appeals, they need an eligibility letter from a state agency. So that process has occurred and that eligibility letter has been issued.
So that's what, that's, I guess, my question is, may, maybe it's a little patronizing, but again, I'm asking it on, on my own end, but on the behalf of a lot of the citizens and neighbors that might be listening. This has kind of already been blessed, if you will, or approved, if you will, by powers above and beyond the power of the zoning Board of Appeals. So our options are kinda, and I wish I could use the words that I'd like to use, but anyway, our options are few. And if we say no as a general, if we just say no to the whole project, then the, then the applicant goes back to the state and the state overrules our no and it happens. And what we've done is we've given up the opportunity. And I think that's what really needs to happen here, and I think the public needs to understand. We've given up our opportunity to mitigate. So I feel as though the role of the Board of Appeals at this point is to listen to the public and mitigate. In other words, we gotta try to get as much for the town as we can to make this, you know, as palatable as we can. We don't wanna use too much salt because then it's salty and it goes bad the other way. But we wanna make it palatable, we wanna make it as best as we can for the town because we know this is being force fed to us whether we like it or not. So it's better to try to make it so that we can like it. You know, I guess that's why they put a little sugar in the medicine back in the old days. And that's about all we can do. And, and I'll finish my rant here by saying to the people that are listening, I've been told that between this project and the project that's previously been approved with great opposition at the end of Head of the Bay Road, the town then does in fact meet the 10% requirement. And this forty B will never be able to be force fed to us again. I feel like, you know, the goose that's producing the pate will no longer have a pipe shift down his throat. So I think it's important for the public to understand that, that this may be the last forty B project presented to the town of Wareham. If in fact it is approved, which it will be, whether we want it to be or not. I'm done.
All right, thank you, Jim. Although I, I believe we always need housing, but that's besides the story. Counselor, let me.
Nazir, can I make a correction there?
Yes, sir, yes, Mr. Slaver.
The way forty B works with a 10%, it's not only your town, but it's in the region you're in. The towns around us are way under 10%. We would get a one-year reprieve. And then because everybody around us is under 10%, someone can come back in a year later and put a forty B in, in the same conditions, whether you're under 10% or not. I don't believe the two projects that are on the books that are potentially coming are going to make the 10% anyways. But just so understand that it's a misconception that if we reach 10%, we're basically free and clear forever. It's not the case because everybody around us is well under 10%. And that's the way that actual law works.
I, I, that, thank you, Mr. Slaver. I do agree in the 150 units on the head of the bay and 93 here. So you're talking 250, so now you're short 25 forty B. You see how it works, Ken, it keeps the feat in itself. But this project is here right now, defeat and something after, we'll discuss after. So I'm gonna, Counselor, if I may, let me ask some board members as we go. Does somebody wanna make comment before the attorney keep going? Veronica, Richard and, and Chris.
I, I'd like to get some clarification, if I may.
Yeah.
So this is, Mr. Haverty said that this is, this is kind of a formality. It's, it's, it's a requirement, but it's a formality to present these waivers to us. Is that right?
I, I wouldn't say that I was saying that it's a formality. Again, you know, the process is designed to create affordable housing. So if the board decide, it, it, the board doesn't really have the authority to simply state, we're not gonna grant any waivers, we don't think you should do this project. Because if that happens, then my client can simply appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. And far more likely than not, we're going to prevail. And you will have lost your opportunity to craft conditions that would actually address issues of concern. So although the issuance of waivers isn't a formality, it, it is, you know, something that the board's discretion is somewhat limited. And I wouldn't really focus on the waivers as much as I would the project impacts. Because that's really what the board should be looking at when it's making a decision. And it would, it should be looking at when it's crafting conditions. The, the board really needs to try to come up with a decision that protects what can be protected. And I know my client will work with the board to do what it can to protect issues of concern. And as long as they're not going to fundamentally change the nature of the proposed developments, I'm, I'm sure that we can work with the board on this.
So, so the, the, the term waiver is synonymous with variance. So basically, you're asking to waive the variances, right? So the variances are gonna be waived, I, I mean, you're, you're. Every waiver is a variance.
Exactly, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. And to an extent, yes, but to a different extent, no. Because the legal standard for granting waivers is significantly different than the legal standard for granting variances. Variances are derogations essentially from your zoning bylaw that are disfavored and more likely than not are going to be overturned, as, as I heard discussed, you know, from your prior hearing tonight. Those are the, the sorts of decisions by the board that the board has to be very careful in making because i- if they grant variances, there's a very strong likelihood, if they're appealed, that they could be overturned. Here, it's just the opposite. The waivers are not only not disfavored, they're actually encouraged under chapter forty B. That is how chapter forty B developments get done, is by getting waivers of local rules and requirements that are otherwise restricting the development of affordable housing. And if the board decides that they simply don't want to grant waivers, then the applicant again can appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee and those waivers are going to be granted. So that's sort of the difference between the two circumstances. I understand.
So does, just, so the state calls it a waiver instead of a variance?
But they're really not.
Is what it sounds like.
I understood.
All right. Okay, Richard, do you wanna say something?
Nope, I'm all set.
Okay, and Chris?
I'm all set also, too.
All right, let's keep going, Counselor.
So, Mr. Chairman, did you want me to continue going through?
No, it's, it's, it's no sense going through them, we'll have to sort them out with, with our commissioner. And again, I do understand you asking if waivers to put more than forty units, which I understand how the forty B is. So I thought that it's not really a variance under forty B. But, all right, keep going. So for, leave that, we'll, we'll discuss those later.
Okay, so we'll go to the waivers later. Charlie, I don't know where you wanted to go.
Yeah, so what would you like to do? You want us to go, go through the site plan again for you? What, where would you like to?
Right, last time we talked about the site plan and, and we had a lot of like neighbors and a lot of the neighbors, of course, traffic, traffic, traffic. And I, there was a lot of neighbors discuss fencing. I did personally, I did discuss with the person from Conserva-, from Conservation, which she makes perfect sense. And a lot of neighbors said they use, they see a tree, they see a deer or they see a turkey. And I don't think a fence is a good idea personally. And they're only gonna look good for six months and they're gonna break again. And I don't think a fence, uh, uh, is, which is, she makes perfect sense, that is gonna get, allow the animals to travel, like a turkey or whatever, a turtle or, or a deer. So I, even though the neighbors, I'm, I'm reaching out to the neighbors, they like to see a fence. I don't think it's in good on their, in their best interest to have a fence. We will work hard to keep like, I see, I see a good 150 feet.
We are so far, yeah, we, Mr. Chairman, we are so far away from.
Right, so I, I mean, if we could, for instance, make a deal with the applicant, make sure, say like 70 feet undisturbed or 50, I think that's way better than putting a fence personally. That's again, that's my opinion. Also, we, we have discussed the, the exit onto Nicholas Drive. Again, we're waiting to hear from the fire department if they like it open.
Yeah, so we, yeah, sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, we did part of, so, sorry, I don't know if I, if I mentioned this, but Ken was able to pull the various departments together. We did have a meeting with, with departments, police and fire were both there. We subsequently got a list of comments from the fire department. Rich Clayder from Horsey Witness has done an initial response to them. We're going back to them to address their comments. The, and on some, on a broad stroke, the couple of things that they were looking for was second means of egress from the, on the other side of, from Littleton Drive.
Onto Nicholas?
No, no, not on Nicholas, they don't, they don't want them, one there. I mean, we're gonna maintain a second means of egress there, but they want an additional means of egress from the left-hand side of the plan. If you look, if you look at the site plan, so it'd come in between buildings three and four through the parking lot. They, he requested a second means of egress there, which is, which is fine, we can, we can add that.
Oh, okay, so you could loop and go behind these two houses?
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, if, if you recall, the, the former site plan that was approved back in the seventies had, had Littleton Road come down and do a T. Do you wanna put up the plan, Rich?
Yeah, Charlie, I can show you. And then I've also got the list from the fire department, a letter, and I could share my screen and, and just go down the list and then toggle over the issues. Would that make sense, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Okay, I will try to share my screen. So he, here is the list of, of, of concerns. There are actually six of them, six items. One is to request a connection to Littleton Drive to the northern parking lot, which Charlie was just explaining. And what we've done there is, I'll just zoom in on that. What they're asking for is to be able to have, be able to get an emergency vehicle in through this side, through this parking lot and into our site. And so what we've done is made sure, number one, we can do it. And that's what these little green lines are, is the grading. And then we would propose to put a emergency access gate there. And this would probably not have to be paved. It would be something that would be a, a drivable material that a fire truck can get in, but, but doesn't necessarily have to be a paved surface. But we will, we'll coordinate with the fire department on that and see what they want.
Are they adamant about this access?
Well, we don't know about adamant. I mean, it's, just to go back to how they wrote it, we are requesting to connect Littleton Drive to the northern parking lot between three and four. This can be gated emergency vehicle only.
You see, my, my concern, if you go back to the plan, Rich.
I will do it.
My concern, I, I mean, as it is, is I do understand it's a huge impact on the neighborhood. Now, again, to go make another road in between, I mean, those two houses, wherever they are, they have a shed on the corner. I don't have a number. I mean, at least the project now, it's isolated by itself in the back, kinda. Now to go around and put up 360 degrees roads around them, you're really killing them. I, I understand the water, the fire department, you, you have an emergency exit on Nicholas, Nicholas Drive. Why, why would they not wanna go around these two poor houses?
Well, I think what we would do is coordinate with the fire chief.
I think he's here.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Chairman, the reason being is.
Oh, oh, I, Captain, oh, hi, Captain, go ahead.
So strategies and tactics, we, when, if we do have a house fire on one of these, we're laying down the foreign supply lines. We, we may block a road and block that first engine in, may block a road. So it would be a lot easier to use that Littleton Drive exit entrance opposed to driving all the way around to cremise it if we block, if we happen to block a road. So it's just, it's really strategy and tactics, making our fire suppression a little more effective. Now, as, as the previous speaker said, this.
Rich.
This doesn't have to be a road, Nazir, Chairman, sorry. It could be, it could be a gravel drive. There's already, there is already a drive there. It would end at the gate and then it could be a gravel drive. It looks like they're gonna have a walking path in that area anyways. So it could just be part of the walking path, just be a little wider.
Yeah, I, I think our goal would be to make this essentially very passive and, and maybe even use a, a, a paver turf system that, that is sturdy for fire trucks, more than sturdy. And, and, and not a plastic turf, but a, but a concrete-based turf that has grass growth through, going through it and, and then would allow, you know, landscaping and whatnot. So, you know, it would be very passive and then it could blend in with the walking path. So we think we could accommodate that comment and also have a pretty minimal impact on the, on the aesthetics.
All right, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna hear a lot from these.
Okay, the next comment was to approve a, a method for securing emergency access. This is essentially to use gates and, and we've shown, shown that. Just to go back to that really quickly, to go back to the site plan, we're also proposing a gate down at Nicholas Drive, which would be for emergency access only. And, and that would have the fire department would have the keys to that and the police department. So that's the only time that there would be traffic through there. And then the other ones are hydrant spacing, which is straightforward. We'll be, we'll be accommodating their high-hazard fire hydrant spacing requirements. And then the senior building shall have marked fire lane in front of the building. And that's something that's pretty straightforward for us as well. Right now, we have a, a parking, you know, space here. We will go ahead and, and make sure that there is no parking in front of the, the senior building. So that's straightforward. The circle drive shall be altered to provide emergency access. And I think we would do here is just round off these corners so that this whole area has a little better turning movement. We did provide fire turning movement to the, to the fire department and we showed that this works, but we can certainly accommodate that better and, and would plan to do that. They're asking for emergency responder access to the rear of the building. And so we've looked at that and then we can make a revision to our plan to provide 25-foot access in the back, again, with a, a fire truck accessible surface and still stay outside of the 50-foot no disturbance buffer zone to the wetland and Flax Pond. Conservation has raised issues about that, so, so we're, we're keenly aware of that. And then lastly, I guess that was the last one, number six. So those are the issues. And Captain Smith, if there's anything you'd like to add that I missed, I'm happy to defer to you.
Nope, you addressed them perfectly, thank you.
Okay. So that, those were the, the fire issues and, and certainly happy to address them. The, the other issue, Mr. Chairman, that we heard loud and clear from, from the neighbors was the drainage and the high groundwater and the concerns that they had with that and the impact on Flax Pond. And so since our last meeting, we've done soil borings that you knew we were undertaking. We actually went out and did test pits and established depth to groundwater. We filed the, with the Conservation Commission and we attended a hearing tonight, as you now know. We've completed detailed drainage calculations and grading plans and we've gotten those over to your peer reviewer. They haven't had a chance to look at them yet. We've submitted, as I said, documentation to the wastewater flows, to the wastewater commission. As, as I think you know, we met with the department heads, including police and fire and, and have gotten their input. And then we've got the input from the water department, as I, I said earlier. So th- those are the, the big items that we've undertaken. This plan, which is clearly shows some markups or things in response to the fire. And, and we also have a, a plan to deal with some water issues. This is the grading and drainage plan and your peer reviewer has that. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What, what, at what elevation you have water table, do you recall?
Yeah, the elevation is about elevation 10. It's actually a little less than that. And our, and our, and our, we're, we're proposing to fill the site, not, not a ton, but enough to get well above that so that our drainage systems can be above the seasonal high water table. We actually didn't hit water because we've had a drought, as you may know. It's been very dry, Flax Pond itself is dry. It was a very dry summer and fall. But we can tell where the water table is by the soil conditions and, and we did six borings throughout the site and we were able, we were able to tell pretty much exactly where it is, very consistent. You probably don't wanna see all that, but this is our existing conditions plan with the soil borings on it. We took one here, one here, one here, one here.
This galley system, your engineering said it'll work no problem, like the leaching fields?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing, not to get a lot of details, we're doing some of that. We're doing a lot of surface treatment. We call them bio retention or rain gardens ahead of time. And then we're proposing an infiltration system back here behind these houses. So they, so that is sort of our, our fail-safe condition. But yes, these galley systems will work, they're well above the water table. Your peer reviewer will have an opportunity to look at our calculations and weigh in on that and, and see our soils analysis and, and all of that. So you'll, you'll have input from them on all of that.
All right, I, I know the public are anxious to speak, so.
I'm happy to, happy to stop sharing here and I, you know, come back to anything if you have questions.
All right, so all the public, I know, last time we had, if you wanna hear me quick, so we had Andrew, Maureen, Griffin, Michael, Pam, Donna, Maureen again, Melissa, Loretta, Theresa, Connie, Calvin, Steve, Linda, Nancy and Susan. Who would like to speak first? Or if we have a new members from the neighbors, who would like to speak first?
I can, I'm Maureen Kaleri.
Okay, Maureen.
I would just like to say, I was one of the ones who said, you know, I think a fence would be a good idea. I was also, I think, the person who said, but I really love seeing the deer and the turkeys and I look out my backyard and it's beautiful. So I think that's a very valid point. So I just wanted to share that.
And you live at the.
Eight.
At the Cranberry Grove, right?
Way, yes.
Okay, Maureen, Maureen Andrews, no, you're not Maureen Andrews.
Kaleri.
Maureen with an O, Kaleri.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you, and number eight. All right, thank you for your comment. Next, the next person, who would like to speak?
I have a question. My name is Nancy Ratchcliff. I'm at 9A Cranberry Grove Way.
Yes.
We, Cranberry Grove is a cul-de-sac and I am at the very end of the cul-de-sac. And I am wondering, it's very hard to decipher your maps and your blueprints and everything else. And I am wondering if you can give me some kind of an idea of how far from the edge of my property, which is at the end of a cul-de-sac, is it going to be to your property?
Mr. Chairman, can I share my screen again? I can answer that, answer that question.
Yeah, go ahead, Rich, if you have the whole thing you could see. All right, Nancy, watch that screen.
So this is a Google image of the, of the property and, and you're out here in Cranberry Grove Way, somewhere in here. And this is the old subdivision lane that was there. And our project will be further away from that because that's within, right here is the Flax Pond. You can see that. So in the 50-foot buffer would be somewhere in here, outside of this old road. And then we'll be beyond that. So the development envelope will pretty much be kinda in here. And if you use this little road as your vantage point, and I go quickly back to my, like this plan, you can see this pathway is on that existing old road. And so we will be beyond that. Is that helpful?
I, it is helpful and, and I do have one other question. And my other question is, a, a comment was made that you have met with the police department and with the fire department. We got feedback from the fire department. What about the police department, what do they think of this?
What about, hold on a minute, Nancy, what about who?
The police.
Yeah, what about the police department? Have they given us any, have they given you any feedback as to uh, the volume of people that are gonna be living here, how it's gonna affect Swift Beach Road, how it's gonna affect the traffic in the summertime? Has the police said anything about that?
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'll defer to, to someone else.
Can I speak? Uh, Rich, one second. Go ahead. What, what do you have to say?
Chief Walczak has submitted the comments. Uh, we can put them on the record as well. They are posted on the website.
Can you, can you post them?
What he said.
Yes. One second, let's see what he said.
It says, after review of the planning, planned housing area in the Littleton Drive area, as chief of police, I feel the need to address some concerns. While our community continues to grow with residential and commercial developments, our department fails to keep pace. These housing units would contribute to our already busy call volume and generally speaking, new homes generate calls that can be labor intensive. As I have stated multiple times in town reports, additional manpower is the single greatest need of the Wareham Police Department. In addition, I would be concerned with increased traffic, especially at the intersection of Swift Beach Road and Marion Road, US Route Six. It appears after discussion that this intersection will have a traffic light, which should be a tremendous help. In conclusion, I would hope that the town recognizes our needs, which would allow us to provide the best in police services to the people of this amazing community. If you have any questions or concerns, please contact me.
Thank you. I mean, they do make sense, but I guess it is what it is.
That's easy for you to say. It is what it is, but we.
Let, let me, I mean Nancy, I know, I, I know it sounded harsh, but let me have Attorney Haverty answer this question. Counsel Haverty, are, Paul, are you there?
I'm here.
Can you, can you answer the question about police comments, so and schools, all these things?
Well, schools is absolutely a matter that the, the board should not get involved in.
Right.
I think they gave you that advice um, when I represented you previously.
Yeah.
Um, it, it's, it's simply a matter that, it, it's not even a zoning issue that if this were a forty-eight development, you wouldn't have the authority to make decisions based upon impacts to schools.
Right.
Under forty-B, it raises potential issues um, of fair housing claims. Could otherwise invalidate what otherwise would have been a, a valid decision. So it's.
Okay, but how would you answer this, the, the chief's letter? How can you answer this letter, you or Rich?
For them. So with, with regard to the traffic, I mean, I, I think that there is, is being a traffic study being conducted, right?
Yeah.
Traffic, yeah. And I think that that should be how that is addressed.
So yeah, I could, I could jump in here a couple of things. I think my, my impression was, and you know, Ken jumped in here as well, that my impression was that the, you know, obviously there, there's, you know, if you're, people are always gonna mention something about traffic, but, and particularly on the Swift Beach Road. My understanding was that traffic light was gonna essentially solve that problem for the most part. Um, that was my understanding from that perspective. With respect to the, the traffic study, we have done the traffic study. We can provide it, uh, I mean, we have provided it. Um, you know, if you have any questions or comments about it, our, our conclusions are that it will not change the level of service at those intersections. Um, you know, based on the, on the volume of traffic there. What we have said is that um, we, we would look to make some improvements to that area. I mean, right now, Littleton doesn't have a, doesn't even have a, a stop line. Um, so you know, we'll, at a minimum, we'll put in a, a stop line. We're talking about adding sidewalks uh, uh, all the way from Littleton Drive to Swift Beach Road. And one of the things, you know, that we would be equally willing to do is to put in some signage on Swift Beach Road, if the, if the town be, you know, interested in us doing that, um, that would do some traffic calming with posting of um, a radar speed limit, um, that would show how fast cars are going.
But the traffic light, the traffic light's not going in until uh, two thousand twenty-four. By then it's a mess.
That's not my understanding. I, I believe it's going in earlier.
Uh, when is earlier? And my other question is, when did you have this traffic study done? How long ago?
Within the last three weeks, three, four weeks.
So not during summer?
In winter during COVID?
You should do it during the summertime.
We have um, uh, is our traffic person on? I can't tell if, if they've joined.
Yeah, so I believe we have Jeff Dirk on the, on the call.
Do you wanna comment on your traffic study?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, um, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm the managing partner with Vanessa Associates. With respect to commenting on the traffic study, is there a specific question? I mean, we, so we conducted the traffic study um, as a part of this development project, which is in your records. It's fully compliant with Mass DOT standards. It was conducted, um, the traffic counts were done in November of last year, so they were not done during summertime conditions. I will state that the state standards, so the standards we're required to analyze are basically average month conditions. We are not required to analyze peak summer month conditions. Peak summer month conditions, we can analyze. I will tell you that this project will produce somewhere between thirty and forty peak hour trips. So although the traffic flows in the roadways will be higher than when we measured them, or higher than average month conditions, the net impact of this project is, will not be any different uh, under average month conditions or peak month conditions. Because thirty to forty peak hour trips are, is not something that's going to show a material impact on motorist delays or vehicle queuing. So that, that's the findings of the traffic study, either average month or peak month conditions. It won't alter those findings. Uh, but I'd be happy to answer, answer any detailed questions with regard to the traffic study or the impacts of this project.
Do you have any idea when the traffic light is gonna go in at the end of Swift Beach Road?
You, you are correct with the twenty-twenty, the, the twenty-twenty-four um, timeframe is correct. That's when it's actually listed on the state's uh, transportation improvement program funding list. So it's, it's funding year for construction is twenty-twenty-four.
Yep, well, that's not gonna do us any good.
Okay, but to, to, to answer some questions for you Nancy, I know they did the traffic study and what he spoke to you forty hours, forty cars on peak hour or fifty or sixty, thirty. For me and you, an average person would not understand this. And that's why the town had retain a, a like independent engineer to explain to us, we have a firm that's studying these plans and they will answer us next time, to explain what does forty or thirty or hundred car means on that road on Swift Beach or Littleton Drive. To say if this, okay, they'd come back to us and say, that forty cars, an hour or thirty, that, that's gonna make horrible studies or within the norms. So we'll have to wait what they come back to us and say. Uh, like I said, I don't understand it to be honest with you. And I'm, I'm sure you don't understand these things as well. And most of us don't understand. This is like engineers will have to analyze it. Does that make sense to you?
Yes, it certainly does. As long as somebody is looking into it. I, I just, I just feel that the, the information that's been given to us is, is out of line of what we see for normal traffic going up and down Swift Beach Road. And, and in the summertime, it does make a big difference. So uh, if at the next meeting, somebody is gonna explain it a little bit more in detail, that would be terrific and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, we have a firm out of Born. I forget what's the name of the firm they're reviewing this. They, they do wanna peer review.
Green Seal Environmental.
Green Seal Environmental. And we'll wait to see what they say after their review. You know, if they say it'll be highly impacted, less impacted, doesn't matter, matters, we'll wait to hear. Because like I said, I can't answer. Has anybody here can answer these, these, these questions? Anybody from the board more than the company? I guess not. All right.
I have a question about, I have a question about um, the lights that are going in in twenty-twenty-four. Um, if anybody knows the answer to this, um, because I'm thinking about Swift Beach Road and the width of it. Will Swift Beach Road be changed um, when those lights go in? Or is it just gonna be Route Six? Because I, I, it's being done by the state, right? And Swift Beach Road is not a state road. So are they gonna alter that in any way to make the mouth of that larger?
Ask Alan Slaven if you'd like me to answer.
Yes, Mr. Selectman, go ahead.
Okay, uh, just for reference, so people understand, uh, I am Wareham's uh, representative to the Serpent Commission, which is the Southeast Mass Economic Planning and Development District. And that particular organization handles twenty-seven communities in Southeast Mass. We have a, the TIP program all runs through us. And the Joint Transportation and the Master Planning Organization. I actually chair the commission. Uh, I was able to get the Swift Beach Road moved out of the possible Route Six redo of two lanes and a turning lane. The actual calendar year of twenty-three to twenty-four. It's in the fiscal year of, you know, twenty-twenty-four. It actually would have been probably twenty-six or twenty-seven if it was not able to do this. The road itself will be reconfigured uh, and lined up properly with the, basically the crosswalks, lights, etc. Where it's not lined up at all right now. So it will be redone and the state can go in so many feet into Swift Beach Road and do the work there as well. Uh, any other questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's move for more neighbors. Next neighbor, who would like to speak?
Um.
Can I speak now?
Uh, yes ma'am, let's, ladies first. Who is?
My name is Connie Babula. I called about the traffic before. I live on fifty-seven Swift Beach Road.
Right.
And it's right on the corner of Littleton Drive. That part of Littleton Drive is more like an extension. It's a narrow road and it's not very long. So with all the heavy traffic that will come in, the trucks, and if you wanna say when the houses are built, all the fire trucks or anyone that's gonna go in, it's a narrow road. Did anybody ever take that into consideration? Because you wanna bus stop there for the kids and it's a very dangerous spot.
Well, if I, I could answer this, Connie, the, the plans are not done. This road actually is fifty feet wide. And I'm sure it will be paved and they propose on sidewalks and the side plans are not done. So when the side plans, uh, I mean, do you guys have some side plan for the, how, how wide it will be, the pavement? Was it twenty-four feet of paving? Richard?
Yes. Yeah, the, the access road will be twenty-four feet wide uh, in from Littleton Drive. And then we're gonna uh, extend a sidewalk uh, out to Swift Beach Road.
So I, I know now, right now, uh, Connie, it looks small, but they're gonna widen it and pave it and all that stuff.
You're gonna widen it?
Well, they gotta be enough for trucks to drive, fire trucks, two cars.
Well, Littleton Drive itself is, is already um, about that same exact width. I don't, um, I can do a quick measurement of it.
Well, there's a lot of traffic going into this small area to get in the back. A lot of traffic, very heavy, in and out.
And the, and the area is all woods. Who's going there?
You're gonna, if you have ninety-three apartments, they're gonna be.
Oh, okay.
Double the amount of cars.
Probably triple, but we wait to see for the traffic study and our peer review company, what they say.
And the bus stop too.
So the bus stop that I, the bus stop that I mentioned is not on, on Littleton Drive. I've talked about putting in a bus stop on um, Swift Beach Road.
Well, that's what I know. I know you said that, but the idea is the bus is gonna still stop on the corner of Swift Beach Road and Littleton Drive. So there's a, you know, you're not gonna get in and out of here half the time. To me, it's a small street to get out of.
Yeah, yeah, Littleton, Littleton Drive is uh, twenty-five feet wide now. And, and, and that paved. And that would not need to be widened. It's.
Ah, okay.
Yep, just adding a sidewalk, no changes to that width.
So Connie, I don't understand your question about the, the school bus. You're talking the school bus parking there or?
The reason I mentioned the school buses is because about three houses down, it would really be the Woods of Wareham. And they have school buses at the same time, almost. So you think if the buses are gonna stop out near Swift Beach Road, and next thing you know, they're gonna stop up another bus at um, the woods. It's a lot of traffic backing up.
I, I was talking about, I was talking about the, not the school bus. I was talking about a bus stop. Um, I forget the name of the flex bus that runs.
Oh, the Gatro?
Gatro.
Yeah, yeah, Gatro. The, it, there's, it stops there now. There's just no, there's just no bus shelter.
I know it stops there now. That's not a big deal.
Yeah.
Because that's just people. That's not a lot of kids getting on a bus at one time, on and off.
We're not paying to put a, we're not paying to put a school bus stop on Littleton Drive.
Where are you gonna put it?
Not.
They're not gonna. The, the bus would stop like, just like at Woods of Wareham and pick up the kids.
So will the bus go into the uh, neighborhood?
I mean, I'm, I'm. It, it really depends on what, on what the school does. We, we, you know, we. Yeah, I mean, this is the issue. We, we, in, in Eastham, you know, we, we talk to them and it's really up to them. We, you know, they, they decide how they're gonna, how they're gonna pick up uh, kids and what their routes are.
So, so like, even the, like, fire department, like, the captain is there. They feel that to get in and out of Swift Beach Road, you know, Littleton off Swift Beach, that seems all right.
Right. Yes, I mean, we, we got, we got the comments from the fire department and we went, we went through them and I, I know, I know um, Captain Smith's here. I don't wanna speak for him, but I believe for, he, he's, we're okay.
Yeah, yeah, seems to me you need a better entrance, like two entrances really. And I know it's not gonna happen.
Well.
I guess that's the end of my.
Right, let's see, let's wait for the peer uh, review from the other firm and we'll go from there. The gentleman wanted to speak, who was it?
Uh, I think it was me, uh, Mike Bechtel on um, Six Nicholas Drive. I spoke last time. Um, I, since the last visit, since the last meeting, I, I took a walk through the woods a couple of times and um, I mean, I know everybody has valid concerns, uh, but um, I think this is a, I think the more I look into this project, the better it seems for us and the more we wanna cooperate, the better it'll be. Um, going through that woods right now, it's, it's, yeah, it looks nice from the outside and the summer, and that's still gonna be there because of the buffer zones that are gonna be in place. When you actually walk through there, it's full of literal garbage. There, there's burned out sofas. There's old mattresses, broken up toys and that's some, you know, last summer, somebody dumped a bunch of carpeting there after they redid a house somewhere. As far as people are concerned with, I know there's been concerns about kids, people cutting through and stuff, and we actually had some incidents not that long ago on Nicholas Drive and in that general area. Um, they're cutting through because it's woods that are not policed and don't have visibility and aren't exposed. Um, so you know, kid, kids and so-called troublemakers, they, they hang out in areas where nobody's gonna see them and and they run into there to hide to get out of trouble. When there, when there's a neighborhood that's established in there, that solves that problem. Is a neighborhood where people live, it's gonna be visible, it's gonna be policed. As far as I'm concerned, the more I look into it, having this development there is going to cut down on that trouble for the, all the, the neighborhoods around it as well. Um, and I just wanna reinforce that observation. Um, and it's gonna clean up the area, because there's not gonna be people going into the woods to dump garbage anymore.
Oh, great comments. Thank you, Michael. Uh, who else? Okay, S M C F. Name please?
Pam Smith, fifty-nine Swift Beach Road.
Yeah.
I was, I was curious about how they said they were going to add soil to bring the level of the um, level up, so it's above water table. Um, the grading there, we do get water in our yard and our basement on wet spring days. I just wanted to make sure that the grading that they're putting in is not gonna force the water outward into the neighbors' yards and into their cellars.
Not our own cellar.
Okay, Richard, uh.
Yeah, the, um, yep, the, the, the houses are not gonna have basements. They, they'll be on, on slab, on, on grade and, and the.
Yeah, we, we don't care about them.
Don't say that.
The um, fill is a, a few feet and then the drainage that comes off of these roads will be going into the same subsurface uh, areas that it does now. Um, and then it'll be directed to Flax Pond. And so the drainage will be self-contained to the property. And the town's peer reviewer will be looking at all of the drainage components that we have designed to make sure that the town is happy with them. So we're following the state standards for drainage design and uh, we have to certify. So we're following the state standards for drainage design and we have to certify. And I'm a professional engineer. I have to certify that this is going to work. And my professional license is on the line every time I stamp a set of drawings. So I have to do the calculations and confirm to that. So I feel confident that we've designed a plan that won't have impacts on you. And we're providing a big buffer so that any localized drainage off of these houses will be 50, 100, 150, 200 feet away from the closest property line. So we feel pretty confident we're not going to have impacts on our neighbors' basements or groundwater elevations.
You did, I just noticed that you mentioned the runoff will go into Flax Pond. Is that something the Conservation Commission is going to approve of?
Yeah, the Conserva, we were before them this evening with our opening hearing and they will have comments. The peer reviewer will also comment to them. The runoff currently goes to Flax Pond from this area, so.
Things from houses or parking lots or.
We're not, we're not allowed, we're not allowed to increase the amount of runoff going to Flax Pond. In fact, we're decreasing it by about a third. It'll be a third less surface runoff that goes into Flax Pond. It'll go into the groundwater and drain towards Flax Pond in the subsurface. Just as, just as it does now in.
I realize that you're just adding like rock salt or cars, things like that to the topsoil that isn't out there already, which would be going into the pond. So that was just my thought. But I understand you saying it already goes in there now. It's just you're adding things to it.
We have to show a no net increase in the, in the, in the amount of drainage that goes there. And we're going to actually show a modest reduction, like a 30% reduction of the surface runoff.
So are you, are you concerned that our property is going to create flooding issues on your property?
Um, yes, I am, that too.
Okay, I think, yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, Rich's answer, obviously, we can't do that. We won't do that. And I think we're pretty far away from your.
All right, I, let me speak to this quick. They cannot divert the water to your yard. It's illegal. The commission, he comes up on the inspector, DPW, nobody. Like your neighbor cannot build up their yard and divert the water to you. Going back to Flax Pond, it's the overflow. So it's saying you have a storm over, like that comes over every 25 years. I guess you designed it on 25 years, Richard, right?
We're doing to the 100-year storm.
So each, each 100-year, if it goes through the filtration system, but 100-year storm, if it's overfilled the filtration system, will go in the Flax Pond. Other than the normal runoff he's talking about, the nature runoffs that are decreasing by collecting the water in these chambers. So you understand, it's not like that you're gonna see the water running on that pond. It's not like that.
No, it'll, it'll all go into the local drainage system.
Inside that land and if, if there's a 100-year storm, an overflow should go there only in emergency.
You're gonna touch Flax Pond at all? You're gonna dredge it out because it's not that big? Nope, the Conservation Commission doesn't want us to be anywhere near it. So our game plan is to be 50 feet away from the edge of it.
Well, I mean, we actually, it's, it's an amenity to the property. We want to maintain it as an amenity to the property.
Yeah, it has, it may have some unique.
You might want to look at it first.
Excuse me, everybody. Jim, did you want to say something?
You know how I love to point at the elephant in the room? So I think addressing SNCS, I don't know the people's names, but that's what it says on the screen. And for the engineer and for the developer certification, they may or may not know this. And I think I may be able to bring out the reason for their concern. If you go down Swift Beach Road a little bit, in years past, there was a development that was put in. And when that development was put in, the engineer made a horrible engineering error and foundation. The road was built, foundations were put in the ground. And low and behold, there was a miscalculation made and that developer had to truck for weeks and months. He had to go out and buy equipment and truck in, fill and fill the foundations and then go on top of them. Or he would have ended up with houses with only a four-foot foundation. And in the process of all that happening, I was, I learned, and I was quite surprised to learn, that groundwater follows the elevation. So when all that happened, the ground, the water table actually came up to the new elevation and all the neighbors in the neighborhood found their basements in groundwater. So I'm pretty sure this is what SNCS is alarmed about. And I'm pretty sure that our engineer, who's spoke quite well already, now knowing that, might be able to address that and maybe put them a little bit at ease.
Well, thank you, Jim. I mean, I think, I think we've kind of addressed it, but.
I know you have, but like I said, I'd like to point out the elephant in the room.
Yeah, before, yeah.
I mean, we are, we, we've done a lot of testing out there, number one, and we've done the calculations and put our best design forward. It's a, it is what it called a low-impact design or green infrastructure component. It incorporates natural processes like nature. So we're trying to mimic nature. It's an advanced design. It's not the kind of things that were done five, 10, or 25 years ago. It's, it's been evolution of, of design. And you'll see the, the stormwater on the surface and it's controlled there before you. It's, so it's, it's a, it's a good design and, you know, let me just show this one other image again. Which is just our landscape plan, but, but it's important that this, this buffer, this line that goes around the edge of the property, you know, all the way and then this 50 feet away from.
I don't think we can see your screen.
Yeah, I got it. So this, this, this image, it shows this buffer that goes all the way around the, the property is, is a quite a good separation distance from, from the neighbors. And, and, you know, the stormwater features are incorporated throughout the project. Here is a surface feature, another surface feature, another surface feature. And so they're spread throughout the project so that you're not putting it all in one place. That's the other thing that you have, can have a problem with is, is designs where they take all the stormwater and put it in one location and then you would expect to see a problem. So in our case, we're distributing it across the site much as it does now. So, so that's the idea, mimic what's happening out there now so that we don't have an impact in the future.
All right, so going back, Pam, right, Pam?
Yes.
Thanks very much for you. Just to make you feel bad, better about the basement, they have, so they have to build them and bury them, believe it or not. So it's a little bit more costly for them. It's not, they're not being cheap, but believe it or not, they build them, they have to go the below frost line and bury them. So it's a lot more money than having a basement. So anyway, next neighbor, who would like to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Richard.
Yes, my name is Rich Callan Ann from 4A Rock Marsh Road. Just a couple of things. About 10 years ago, we had terrible flooding on, on our project site. And we have a drainage swale that directs the flow under our street and beyond toward your property, the town property. And about 10 years ago, there was an obstruction or something like that on the town property that needed to be cleared because we had terrible flooding on our street. And the site plan shows basically a buffer in that area, so that should be sufficient to address it. But we would appreciate if the, if they could look at that situation because it seems to be a wetland area bordering the town property. And I did bring this to the attention of the Conservation Commission as well. So if you can look at that situation so that the flow will not be obstructed in the future.
Would you be, would you be able to give us a little more detail on where that might be on the property?
Let me, let me try to share again. This time I'll, I'll hit the.
You and, I mean, Richard, Mr. Collins, and you and Broadmarsh? You're at the practice place?
Is it Rock Marsh?
Rock Marsh is off of Brown Street.
Right, so you, you come in, you're somewhere in here, if I go back to.
I am actually further up toward Brown Street. I'm here speaking for my neighbors.
Okay.
And it's, if you see the, the map here you have.
Yeah.
It is between, you don't have that information, between units 6B and 8A, Rock Marsh Road.
Hmm, well, how many, how many houses down from the intersection with Brown Street would you see?
It is, it would be three houses between the third and fourth house.
Yep, okay, so that's right here. Let me go back to that. So, so this makes sense. This area right in here, I think, is what you're talking about outlined in yellow. It's a low-lying area. And if, you're right, if something was blocking here on, on the town, what was the town-owned property or our project, you would expect to see maybe some ponding up in this area. And so if there was an obstruction, so, so we're aware of that. And what we're doing is, is making sure that this drainage that comes off, this is what our drainage, where all this, all this land drains into the town-owned property, which is now our project. And we've accounted for that. And so our drainage system is not only managing our project, which is outlined here, but it also has to manage all the runoff that comes off of the rooftops and the backyards of the, of our butters, of our neighbors. And so we've taken that into account in our calculations.
So that area, I think it's a kind of a pink line?
Yeah.
Basically, that includes the flow from the other side of the street as well.
Yeah, well, this pink line is the, is the, is the divide. The, this, this drain, water goes in this direction and then the rest of it goes in another direction.
Okay. The other issue is, in the past, we've had people entering the property because we're a convenient cut through to Marion Road. So that has not been a problem lately because of, you know, forests grown in and what have you. So if, you know, your buffer may be sufficient. In addition, moving the trail, I think you've shown it on a newer, more recent plan where the trail is pushed further away from the property line. You've had an older plan that seemed to be fairly close to our property line, but you're moving it away and maintaining a buffer?
Yes, the, the game plan, and, and this is not final. I think this is where your input would be welcome, is to have a circular trail. Oh, hang on, am I sharing now? Yep.
Yes.
Good, to have a circular trail, but this, this will weave in amongst the trees and be on existing ground. So there'll be no grading or tree cutting for this. It'll just be a walking path. And we've tried to pull it sort of as close as we can to, but still provide some trees and some separation distance. So that's what's proposed, but if, if you, if there's an opportunity for input, we would welcome that.
Okay, because this plan shows it further away from the property line versus.
Yeah, yeah.
Another plan you submitted.
Oh, you know what? You may be thinking about the old, and I'll go back to the aerial.
No, not the layout of the old.
The old, the old roads, because they're quite close to the property line.
So you, you were following that layout?
Yeah, they may have, in their first cut through that, they may have run it along that because it's already cleared. So that's probably why it was shown a little closer. But our intention is to sort of have it meander through the woods and let this grow back up. And we'll actually maybe do some planting in there to give it a head start.
So is that area being replanted? It is currently cleared?
Um, well, some of it's gonna, this, it's kind of like right in here. It's hard, hard to see. But some of that is, is going to be within our clearing limit and then some of it is outside of it. I don't, I don't, the intention wasn't to go back and replant it because there's a lot of canopy, but we certainly can stabilize it. You don't, we don't want those trails to just be there and be bare soil. So we'll address that with the landscaping plan when we get to that level of detail.
I can understand the comment regarding the fencing. I mean, solid vinyl fence is usually not like a wooden stockade fence. And the fence would be, you know, a more definitive way of precluding, you know, entrance into our properties. I mean, people used to actually walk by the windows of the units. So at the very least, if there was some way, if that did become a problem, would there be a way of entertaining, if necessary, a fence?
You know, you can tell by the property, it's, it's very big. I think it's going to be, the Conservation Commission is not going to, going to have trouble letting us do that. I'm not sure it's going to actually get to what people would want to get to. It would be very intrusive to put it up. I, I don't think that, you know, this site is going to be, it's going to be a neighborhood, it's going to be a community. We're going to have a presence. We're going to have a manager on the site. You know, as one of the, as I think it was Michael Bechtel said earlier, that, I mean, you're going to get improved conditions here, not worse conditions in terms of people aren't going to be running through here and analyzing things and.
No, no, I can appreciate that. I can appreciate. But the situation is, you know, shortest distance is between two points is a straight line. And the straight line is still to, through our subdivision to Marion Road. So again, I, I agree that what you may be doing may be sufficient. And I'm not asking for the moon, but at the very least, if you can at least leave on the table, if it does become an issue somehow or addressing that.
We would consider it, but yes, I, yes, we would consider it.
Consider it, okay. Because it has been an issue in the past. Thankfully, not as much of an issue now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, who else would like to speak from neighbors?
I would.
Okay, Griffin.
Griffin Leahy from 2 Nicholas Drive. I just wanted to say that I agree with Michael. Like, I'm the closest.
Michael, your neighbor, 6 Nicholas, yeah?
Yes, he, I'm one of the closest to butters here. I mean, I'm, I think I technically am the closest person to this development, save the people actually on Littleton. And I mean, we can't get much worse than kids lighting a couch on fire while drinking out there, right? It can really only be an improvement. Michael had to stop laughing because he's seen the stuff that I, or he had to turn off his camera because he was laughing. He's seen the stuff that I have out there. And the amount of nips that are left in my neighbor or in my lawn just be from people walking across it that are trying to hide out and drink in the woods.
Yeah, I understand, but thanks, thanks for the positive comment. Thanks, like. Who else would like to speak?
Yeah, Andrew Rodriguez, 16 Littleton Drive.
No, Andrew, okay.
So I brought up some concerns last time about traffic, car traffic and stuff like that down Littleton Drive. I don't know if you guys have been down here recently, but right in front of my house, I mean, the small gravel road that leads to the entrance is extremely small. I don't know what your plans are to lengthen that and if it's going to cut into my property. And also, if it's possible to put up a fence that can go around, you know, my house and the neighbor's houses area so that, you know, we don't see that much traffic coming in and out. I'm also concerned about construction equipment, dump trucks, excavators, stuff like that coming in. Like I said before, you guys have already parked a trailer and had, you know, construction equipment drive right by my house. It's kind of concerning, especially with, you know, kids on the way and stuff like that.
Andrew, you live on the house with the shed on the, on the back?
Uh, yeah, correct. So if you're walking down Littleton Drive towards the property, I'm the last blue house on the left.
Well, Richard, if I speak, is it possible maybe plant around the road, around his house? He's the most one impacted, maybe some giant abreviations. Yeah, so as I go in.
Andrew, you would, Andrew, you would let me send messages. I had called you. Andrew, you would, Andrew, you would let me send messages, I had called you back a couple of times, so I'm happy to, to follow up with you directly.
I didn't receive any messages, sorry.
Yeah, particularly on your question about, about, you know, uh, cars that are going on your property, so, um, I'm happy to, you know, like, I'm happy to talk with you directly about some of your issues and concerns, if you want to give me a call.
All right, absolutely, I'll give you, uh, is there a good time to call you during the day, or?
Yeah, anytime, on my cell, nine, nine, seven, eight, five, zero, zero, eight, zero, three, eight.
Yeah, Charlie, if you, miss. He got disconnected.
Uh, I just, I didn't hear the number, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there was no problem, nine, seven, eight.
Yep.
Five, zero, zero, eight, zero, three, eight.
All right.
And the other thing that we're doing, Andrew, too, is that, um, with the website, we're posting, you know, when we're, when we're going out and doing work like we're doing, you know, the, the, uh, the things that Rich mentioned, the groundwater testing, the phase one, the, you know, the borings, all that kind of stuff, you know, we're, we're, we're posting that on our website now. Um, and, um, Ryan, do you have the website? Is it, do we know, is it Wareham? I'm gonna put Ryan on the spot.
Sure, no, it's okay, I'll post it in the chat right now.
Okay, so if you want to go to that spot, we'll be, we'll be putting on there when we're going in there, for the, for the most part, I don't think we're gonna have a lot to be doing much more for a while, um, I think we've, I think we've hit all the, all the things we need to do in terms of the, the groundwork, but yeah, we are posting on there.
My concern is like, I'm gonna be directly impacted by it just because I'm so close.
Sure.
So that's what I'm worried about, um.
And one, one of the things we can do with you and the other neighbors that are there is, you know, but, but when, when construction starts, now, but bear in mind, construction's not gonna start for a long time, right? So, so we have some time to, to figure that out, but, you know, we could work with you and the other neighbors there, because there's only four or five of you to put together, you know, a, a group that talks about, you know, a plan to make sure you, you guys are all comfortable about, you know, when traffic is coming in and when it's coming out, you know, how it's coming in, how it's coming out, um, you know, and, and go through that with you, um, and the contractor, make sure we're all on the same page about that, that kind of construction activity.
Alrighty, yeah, that would be, be great, um, it's good to know about the website and stuff like that with you guys posting, because that was a big concern of mine, you know, I'd, sometimes I work nights, I'm self-employed, so I could be up, out all day, and then I come home and the last thing I want to see is a truck parked in front of my house, you know what I mean, so.
Understood, the difficulty now is, as you know, it's, 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 you can't actually get into the site, um, so that's the unfortunate thing now. Um, you know, once, once we can get in there and start carving through some roads, they won't be stopping in front of your, in front of your property.
Nope, that's understandable, and now, when do you guys think that you'd be breaking ground?
So, yes, I mean, this also gets back at the, at some of the traffic things, and maybe we could, we could actually maybe work with the town to try to help move up the, I don't know if we can, but see if we could try to move up that traffic light, I had actually thought that the traffic light at Swift Beach Road was coming in sooner than twenty twenty-four, so I apologize, I thought it was earlier, but, um, if I'm laying out the schedule, um, you know, the earliest that we could probably be, um, in construction on this, the very earliest would be, uh, a year from now. And we would probably have about an eighteen-month construction schedule, so, you know, we're, we're talking about the first residence actually not moving onto the site probably until twenty twenty-three. Um, so, you know, that might give people some level of comfort to think about, you know, you're not gonna have a big gap between, you know, when that light's coming in and when people will be living there, um, and again, maybe we can help you guys to figure out how we can move that up, so that those two dates kind of coincide.
Alrighty, yeah, I mean, if you, I mean, we'll talk about it on the phone, there's just like the entrance going in, it's very narrow, especially going right in front of my house, um, and I believe if I doubled, I double-checked my property lines when I signed the mortgage for this house, you know, I own part of that gravel road, too. I'm pretty sure, so I'm gonna have to double-check that, but we can speak about that.
Yeah, we have, we've done a survey, we can, we can, we can make sure we're on the same page with what you own and what we own.
Okay, yeah, because that's a concern of mine also, but we'll talk about that, um, that's basically it for now, uh, and we can talk tomorrow more about everything else.
Thank you, Andrew. Richard, that's, I mean, Charlie, that's a great idea, if you coordinate with the six neighbors, you have six of them during construction, and, uh, I mean, spice up the, as much as you can, the landscape.
Well, they can also, right, they, they can also be our eyes and ears, you know, as much as, as much as, as contractors, you know, try to do the right thing, sometimes their subs don't do the right thing, and they're driving, coming in at hours they shouldn't be, or different things like that, so, you know, we'll need Andrew and the neighbors to sort of be our eyes and ears out there to help us, you know, deal with any of those kinds of issues as well.
All right, who else would like to speak? Okay, uh, so, yeah, Jimmy.
I had it said earlier, there's been a lot of conversation about, um, traffic.
Yeah.
I heard the developer say that they'd be happy to put up one of those electronic speed signs, you know, when you go down the road, it tells you how fast you're going.
Yeah.
I think those things are fantastic, I think they're very effective, and I think that's a great offer.
Happy to do it.
All right, good, nice, there you go, uh, I mean, I mean.
Just one, you could ask two.
I was just curious, the speed limit on Swift Beach Road is thirty-five miles an hour, with adding, which is pretty much, they go forty, because they go five above, um, would there be a way of lowering it to thirty, and perhaps that way it would at least stop it from speeding by and what have you, there would be a lower speed limit, so maybe cars would go slower and there'd be less accidents.
You gotta partition the selectmen, the road commissions, that's, that's different process.
Nothing to do with it.
All right, I just thought I'd ask, thank you.
Thank you, uh, it is. Yeah, but, where, where do we go from here, right, I mean, what, where do we go?
I mean, we, we, what we would like to do, so it's with the peer reviewer now, you know, we're, we're, we, you know, we're, we're trying to, um, as, you know, the, it, it takes a while to, to get this thing in the, into the ground, but our, our medical now is, is to get, you know, the, the financing lined up. And so, um, you know, we're going through the peer review now, we'd like to see, you know, I don't know, Ken, how quickly we can get those comments back, if we can get them this week, you know, our guys will jump on it and turn around, we'd like to try to, to, to get this wrapped up, you know, the next week or two with you guys, so that we'd be in a, you know, for our, for our application, um, you know, obviously, this is still a really long process, um, and as we go through this, you know, we're, we're gonna continue to refine the plans, and as we go through it, you know, we'll, I'm sure we'll come up with, with changes we may need to make, and we'll need to come back and have conversations with you, so it's not the, it's not the end of the conversation process. But we'd like to try to get the zoning piece wrapped up, um, you know, shortly, um, you know, by the next meeting or the meeting after, so that we could, you know, go in for our application. And if there's still some conditions that need to be put on it, that we haven't addressed everything, you know, that's, we're happy to do that as well.
All right, so you, would you be okay if we continued to the twenty-seven?
Uh, well, actually, we were hoping that, we were hoping for next week, um, you know, our guys are ready to go, I mean, you've, you've seen how quickly we can, we can respond to things. Um, so we, we prefer to actually come back next week.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, I'm going away, I'm, I'm in an area that'll be poor internet connection, if I'm not here.
Come with you, wherever you're going, we can just come there and.
And do you, you need a quorum here to?
So you might see the quorum, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna try to go online, but if I don't.
Yeah.
You don't have a quorum.
I thought Ken didn't, I thought you had a meeting on the thirteenth.
We do have one, but say if I'm not, if I can get through, we only have four. Do you want, I mean, you could try it, and if, if you don't, you could continue from there.
Available?
Well, we do, but it's not fast like here, so it's, it might not be, it, it might not work, that's why I gave you, I gave you a heads up, I said.
Well, yeah, why don't we, and are you meaning to get on the twentieth, or not?
Twenty-seven, I mean, you could go on the thirteen, but, I mean, if I can't get through and you don't have a quorum, you just have to continue, if you wish.
Well, we could take the chance that you can get through, Nazzy, if you get a iPhone hotspot or something, then we're, we're good, if, if they come to the next meeting and there's not a quorum, they continue, but at least we could try.
All right, let's try for the thirteen, is that good?
Yeah, we'll come back, we'll come back as, as much as you need us to, um, I'd like to try to get it done before the twentieth, actually, so that would be really great.
Let's get a motion to continue to the thirteen.
So moved.
I would second on that.
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Aye, Richard Sumpel.
Aye, Veronica Debonese.
And I, Nazzy Alcalasi, we'll see you gentlemen next week, I mean.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Everybody has my number, if anybody has comments or questions, you know, feel free to reach out to me directly.
All right, very good, thank you.
Pam and Nazzy.
That's a good evening.
Can I, Nazzy, can I just ask one quick question?
Sure.
On, on, on Mr. Slavens remark on that we would hit our ten percent, and then, within a year, they could come back because the other towns were less than ten percent? I'm, was, my question is, why do we have to share the burden, because the other, I mean, take more burden on our town if the other towns ain't, aren't, aren't up to ten percent?
It's the law.
It's the way forty B is written, sir.
Unfortunately, yeah, that's how it is. That answer your question?
Yeah, I said, thank you.
Thank you, all right, let's go back to that.
Alcalasi, this is Jim Manis here.
Um, yes, Mr. Manis.
Yeah, um, a lot of people say a lot of things about interpretations and, um, it's not always based on fact, but it's based upon what could happen, it doesn't mean it would happen, and, um, I wish people would stay away from doing that, saying, well, if you, you know, if you don't do it, then, you know, you can go to court and you're gonna lose, or, um, well, you know, we could hit the ten percent, but there's always a possibility of anything happening anywhere. And, um, it's just like every time you give a bone, uh, density bonus during your hearings, when you put three houses on one lot that wouldn't take, wouldn't qualify for one now, we would fall behind on achieving the ten percent and staying even with it, so, all those things have to be taken into consideration. And, um, you know, just, just don't say things, not anybody in particular, just everybody. Just, just don't make general, um, references, and say, this is what it is. Thank you.
I mean, who you're referring this to, I was saying.
And in general, in the conversation tonight, in the different meetings that are going on, and, and interpretations on things, none of us are adjudicating in, in the courts of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or, um, uh, on the boards that make the determinations within the state, um, on what would or would not be done, so, uh, let's just stick to the facts that are being presented, and, um, and go from that, thank you.
Thank you, but I can guarantee you, Mr. Manis, myself and the, the rest of the board will do our best to protect our town and help our town, and none of us is an attorney, so.
Thank you.
We say so in the wrong place, sorry to everyone, but we all try very hard to help our town, so. Anyway, that's being said, thank you, gentlemen, we'll go back to the case, we tabled.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Twenty-seven dash twenty-two, J C M A Realty LLC, the one sixty-nine onset app. It's still open, counselor, what'd you come up with?
Um, I think we're gonna call for a vote.
You wanna call for a vote, very well. Okay, Mr. Perry, you still there?
I'm still here.
Okay, uh, are any more comments before we close the public hearing? I hear none, Jimmy, somebody wanna give me a motion to close?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Okay, I have a motion to close publicly.
Sir, sir, hold on, uh, Walt and Rhonda wanna make one more comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, Teresa, our neighbor, had made a very valid comment that the way it appears on the screen tonight, the only legal justi-, the only justification for the approval from mu- many of the members was the way it looked. The law of the variance strictly requires, relates to, I should say, to the size, not look. Look is a site plant issue, not a var-, not a zoning board issue. And, and so, there really has to be justification to held, to be held in court, it should just go to court, that the, uh, approval of the double the size has to strictly be related to the law and not by looks. And so, um, I, I think that the, the, the fact that, that the law clearly states, I believe, it's a twelve fifty, twelve hundred square feet building that can be put in there, that's ample size for many, uh, units to live in, it can be dressed to look, uh, appropriately, uh, decent with a nice pitch roof and siding and maybe a porch. So, the, 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 the reality is, is that I don't think the, uh, zoning board of appeals has legal right to approve the doubling of the size, which is contrary to the law that was written based upon looks alone.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respond to that, if you.
Yeah, while, while you respond, Counselor Moore, and I want you to give me the statute, just, I, I.
Absolutely, I was gonna go in.
I have on record the statutory requirement.
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Because you know where that going, so.
I know, yeah, so the first statutory requirement, to be very specific, is the, um, soil conditions, the topography of the lot, um, as well as the, the shape, um, that's very clear in the beginning of, uh, the statute. Um, and I know Attorney Perry is saying that F A R, um, cannot, you can't grant a variance on F A R floor area ratio. Um, I respectfully disagree with that fact, and, and I know there have been variances approved through this town with F A R, um, because it does directly affect, um, it's affected by the lot, so that's the first, um, requirement there. The second being that it's a hardship to the petitioner, and actually, the opposition has already conceded that it would be a hardship for Mr. Salerno if he's unable to build um, this project, that's already in the opposition letter. Um, number three is, um, that it wouldn't be, um, detrimental to the neighborhood, and we've gone back and forth with that regarding the parking, regarding what was there before, the history of the lot, it being a tiki bar, and then, um, the prior things that were there, um, and how the parking for a two-family would affect, um, the neighborhood and the concerns there. And then the last one's no degradation from the, um, zoning bylaws, the purpose of it. And the purpose of the bylaw with the F A R specifically, um, is to make sure that there aren't giant houses getting built right next to small houses, you can see through the change in the code that was done by, uh, Ms. Barquina actually had a lot of involvement in that, those are based on other parts of the town, where there were these huge houses getting built by smaller houses. All of these F A Rs on that bluff are over what we are seeking, they're fifty-eight percent, we're seeking fifty-two. So, to actually not approve this, um, I don't think would be right, so those are the statutory requirements, and so, to say that you, as a board, are just approving this because of the look, that's not right, you're meeting the requirements.
Can I, can I re- respond to Jillian's comment? This is Walt and Rhonda, sixteen eighty, Ocean Avenue.
Go ahead.
All right.
Make it.
Yeah, you will, is a vacant lot that, the way it was presently in the past, considered a hardship? Jillian?
I'm, I'm really not sure what you're exactly referring to, a hardship.
Well, with, and I don't really want to go back and forth.
No, no, we're not, listen.
The reason why, the reason why.
Cause Mr. Rhonda, listen, you have to ask us a question, you cannot argue with the, with the petitioner.
All right, all right.
I can only, listen how it works, this has gotten to a point, I know where it's going, so it's gotta be, the procedure's gotta be right. An applicant and anyone else have to address the question only to the board, he can't argue with the applicant, go ahead, just to ask, you can't defer to.
Okay, th- then the board, then I'm asking a question to the board, the lot, as of, uh, as of now, since ownership has been vacant, so the question is, is the vacant lot considered a hardship? If it's not considered a hardship, then why is only one unit considered a hardship, and why that justifies you need to? What I'm saying is, a hardship is, eh, you're, you're saying one unit's a hardship, or vacant lot is a hardship, yet it's been present as a vacant lot for a number of years, and if he's allowed to build one unit as per the law, why is that a hardship when a vacant lot is not a hardship?
All right, I'll allow Mr. Moore to enter the, to answer this, you cannot argue together, though, go ahead.
Absolutely, well, I think that you're actually missing the point here, it's already approved for a two-family, and what we're looking for right now on the variance is for F A R. So the two-family, there's no, we're not seeking a hardship or anything, the hardship would be for not to allow him to build the, at the F A R, that was already there, there was a sixty-two percent F A R home there for a hundred years. Then it was demolished and moved, well, actually, it was moved over to Onzadap, and then the tiki bar, which we all know how that went. So he's strictly seeing, trying to build something that's gonna be great for the neighborhood, and to deny that now, um, because of a butters, whether it's your concern about your view, about traffic, about people in front of you, I understand. But it would just be wrong, and it meets the statutory requirements for variance, and we're willing to fight that.
All right, that, so I think.
May I just say one thing, please?
Yes, Counselor, go ahead.
Only be seconds. FAR is related to only one thing, lot size. It's not related at all to soil conditions, shape, or topography. Hence, it doesn't come within the statute. That's all I've got to say.
And, and what, okay, but she stated her statue. We're gonna stick, for the record, just Sonia, make sure these, the Counselor Moore and what she did for these, for her statue, the fourth statute requirement. Make sure you write them exactly how she did them.
No, no, Nazi question uh, for the, for the neighbors. Is the property zoned for two units or just zoned for a, a, a house, if you will?
It's MR3, it is zoned for two.
It is zoned?
It's MR3, yes, yes, sir. All right, that being said, are we, are we all set with the comments?
It's OV1.
OV1, wait.
Who? All right.
It's zoned OV1.
OV1, Ansett Village 1. So, but Ansett Village allowed multiple units. I'm sorry, it's OV1, not MR3. I made a mistake, that's right. Ansett Village 1, Rhonda. You get that? Mister, Mister Rhonda?
Yeah, we, we hear OV1, but what is, what's the def, I, what's the definition?
If you go in the bylaw, the OV1, I think it calls 5,000 square feet for one unit if you'd be doing from scratch. A thousand square feet for each, or, I mean, let, let me, I don't, I mean, the book is that thick, but.
Well, well, I believe if I understand the last meeting we had.
But regardless, that's a grandfather law, you understand? But I'm gonna, one second, I can read you the law, but that's for new, some, new lots. But that's an existing, non-conforming lot that's allowed for a duplex by rights.
Ansett Village 1.
It's not.
Page fifty-two. Section six twenty-two of the Winterham bylaws, minimum lot area square feet, one family or two-family dwelling, 5,000 square feet.
Very good, that's your answer, even confirmed right now. So you.
That's the most recent version.
That's not even, has to be grandfather.
But that might be true for the lot size. You can put two units on 5,000 square feet. But the lot, but the 5,000 square feet dictates the size of the building, not 5,000 square feet building, it's 1,000.
But that's why these people are here. We're not, that's why they're here for the variance for the FAR, the size of the building. That's why they're here. All right, that being said, okay, can we have a motion to close?
What's he mean? Yes.
To close.
I've made that motion, I'm just waiting for a second.
Do I have a second?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris, all in favor to close the public hearing? Got at least, I'm sorry, I have to do this. Twenty-seven dash twenty, G C M A Realty LLC for 169 Ansett Ave, map one, lot B. All in favor, say aye.
Jim, aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Rick Sample, aye.
Veronica Debonis, aye.
Nazi Al Palassi, aye. Now, we're gonna, we're gonna make, we're gonna hear wishes of the board. Anyone who's aggrieved by this decision under Master Law, chapter forty-eight, section seventeen, they have the right to exercise their right and appeal the court and the, and the spirit, and the district court, I believe, or superior court, right, Counselor? Superior court. Okay, now wishes of the board. Also, this, fine, I mean, I'm, I'm not an attorney, so.
Many courts have jurisdiction over it, but we use superior usually.
Very well. Uh, more wishes of the board.
If I understand the application correctly, and I don't have it in front of me, the applicant is seeking relief for floor area ratio. And they're asking for relief in, in what amount?
I'm sorry, from the existing code?
Yes.
Fifty-two percent versus twenty-five.
Okay. So we're voting on floor air, FAR only.
Yes, a relief for the FAR, yes.
Then I make a motion to grant relief for the FAR per request with standard conditions.
Okay, and basic, and I, I have to add, based on the findings that Attorney Jillian Moore instated. Okay, for the record, Sonia, please add those. So I have a motion by Jim to grant. Do I have a second?
I second Chris Conti.
Second by Chris Conti. Everyone in favor, second by saying aye and state their name.
Aye, Richard Sample.
Aye, Jim Akabachi.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Veronica?
Uh, deny Veronica Debonis.
Very well, aye, aye for Nazi Al Palassi. It passes. Thank you very much. Okay, other businesses, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for all, all your comments.
Okay, we have thirteen dash nineteen, twenty-four sixteen, Cranberry Highway. Minor modification, I, I just saw this. Ken, what's that?
Yes, they wanna put in, in an EV charging station at the Nurya Gas Station.
Have any plans, anything?
Yes, they do have a, a plan that shows the, the existing parking space at the uh, at the back left corner, being used for an EV charging station.
Do we have that plan?
I don't have that with, with the uh, 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 access to it on the uh, on the website at this time.
So who is this?
This is the Nurya across, across from Aspen Dental.
Old Maxi, is this Old Maxi gas?
This is Old Maxi's gas, yes.
Okay, so they wanna put an electric charge instead, one of the, one of the existing parking spaces will have a place to plug in an electric vehicle?
That's correct.
Well, I don't see anything wrong with that. I don't even know why that should be a discussion. It seems like a minor modification to me.
I agree.
You are correct, Chris, two, two of them, not one.
But they could put twenty in, as far as I'm concerned, they could put one in every parking spot.
Okay, so every, there's two parking lot spaces, Ken, they adding just electric chargers, right?
That's right, just at the end of the parking space, putting electric chargers and.
Okay, so uh, you guys, you, you think it's a minor modification?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do you agree, Veronica?
I'm just wondering, so it's not even gonna take away the parking space?
No, the same parking space, while you park, you could charge electric your car. Just like how they did in front of Lowe's. You see the parking space, they added electric?
They'll probably put up a sign that says electric charge, electric vehicles only, uh.
Right, or something.
Charge for it.
And they're gonna charge for people to cha, to plug it in.
Yeah, that's what they do at Lowe's too, so. I mean, it's like a gas station, but for electric, so. Uh, is everybody on board as minor modification? Veronica thinks it's minor, right?
I do.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, minor.
Richard?
Aye.
My request?
Uh, yes, minor.
Okay, let's make a vote. So, and uh, for thirteen dash nineteen, twenty-four sixteen, on a minor modification to add two electric charger, pump charger on existing two parking spaces, that makes sense?
Right, that's good.
Okay, can I have a, so moved by Jim, do I have a second? Second by Chris Conti, all in favor, say aye.
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 Chris Conti.
I think. Sample.
I have Veronica Debonis, and I think Richard Sample seconded that.
Exactly, yes.
Aye, Nazi Al Palassi, and thank you. Uh, thank you very much. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
Second by Jim, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, thank you very much. Have a good night, lady and gentlemen.
See you next.
That sounds good.
All right, very good. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wareham Zoning Board of Appeals for the town of Wareham, and we are on Zoom meeting. Apparently, it is Wednesday, January sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and it's six thirty-five PM. I wanna call the meeting to order. I'll make a roll call. Uh, I have made the chair, Nazi Al Palassi.
Richard Sample.
Chris Conti.
Veronica?
Veronica Debonis.
Okay, very well. Also present, we have our selectman, Mr. Alan Slaven, and we have our town planner, Mr. Buckland.
I think Jim Menese is on as well.
Who is that, Kenny?
Jim Menese, the selectman.
Oh, okay, I, I don't see him in the picture, but, okay, Mr. Menese, very, very well, very good. I, I don't see him anywhere. Okay.
I'm here, I'm here, I'm just not on video.
Ah, okay, Mr. Menese. Okay, very good. All right, uh, we're just gonna go for the preliminary business. We have two dash eighteen Dakota Partners and substantial modification request, thirty-one oh two Cranberry Highway. Mr. Freeman, aye, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record. Peter Freeman for the applicant, and Mark Pilaut is here from Dakota. So at the last hearing, a few weeks ago, we did, you, I should say, did approve the notice of modification as an insubstantial change, but you wanted to come back and have a, a, a different additional vote related to the demolition of the motel and a bond in the event, they hadn't been demolished at a certain point in time, that was discussed and agreed to. So uh, I had drafted with my client and uh, with Mark, with Ken Buckland, uh, the revisions, we sent it to Ken. And from our perspective, including Ken, as I understand it, you know, we were satisfied that this met with what you wanted us to do. So I assume that the board has seen it, and I can read the additional language if you want, but it, it should be in the record before you. That's really all it is. Thank you, sir.
Kenny, you're good with that?
Yes, we had a long discussion. I reviewed it with Dave Requena, building commissioner, and um, I think we're good to go.
Okay, Veronica. You have a question?
Uh, no questions.
You're okay. Richard?
No questions.
Chris?
I'm all set.
Uh, Alan, do you have anything to say? Or Mr. Menese? Take a mute button, Alan.
I'm all set, Nazi. This is Jim Menese.
Okay, Mr. Slaven? Where's Alan?
The selectmen are gonna be reviewing the, if it's an insurance bond, they'll be reviewing the documentation, yeah.
Right. Any, any other comments from the public? Okay, we're.
Finally got.
Hey, okay, I'm Mr. Slaven.
Thanks. Uh, as, as Ken said, the board of selectmen have not reviewed the the, the actual uh, bond, whatever they're gonna be for instrument, that will.
Connections horrible, Alan. For the record, also, Mr. Jim Akabachi, our, our clerk just joined us, and it's six thirty-nine PM. Mr. Slaven, horrible connection, we can't hear a word, but uh, I guess uh, we heard from Mr. Buckland. And you guys gotta, I guess, do the bond and everything else, right, Ken?
I'm not sure what kind of security, uh, they'll, they'll be supplying, it depends on what it is.
Alan?
I can't. Mr. Chairman, if I may, just real quick?
Yeah.
So as we discussed with Ken, and Ken is saying, um, the bond may be needed, but it may not be needed. So we have the specific amount in the event it's needed, that was worked out, the amount and times 1.5%. So that's in there, and we understand that the form of the bond and language uh, that would be appropriate is something that, you know, the selectman would review, that's fine. You know, this does not obviate that, so we're fine.
Okay. Mr. Slaven, Alan, you, you wanna say something? You mute button? All right, just gonna go. All right, uh, any other input? No one? Okay, would the board like to make a, I guess, approve what we talked about? Make a motion?
You have enough people to make a vote without me, because I really didn't hear what you're talking about.
Uh, yeah, we got enough people.
Okay.
We, we just a minor modification for the Dakota Partners. So we don't have to go back.
Same thing we talked about last meeting?
The, the last meeting, it was a discussion about, well, might as well, let's fill you, and there was a discussion about uh, the motel, about a language and a bond for the town.
Right, I was there for that meeting.
Yes. So, right now, I guess, the Counselor Freeman asking us to approve it, get a vote for it, and they'd work out the bond with the selectmen and Mr. Buckland. And Mr. Buckland reviewed the, the language, he's okay with it, the rest of board members are okay with it.
Okay, so if it's, if it's what we discussed before, I got it now. I'm with you, I'm back with you, okay?
Okay, can we have a motion for that? Is everybody okay making a motion?
Being late to the party, I hate to be the guy making the motion, uh. But I will, I will go ahead and move to acting the affirmative.
We have a motion by Jim to grant the, the, the language on that, on that vote and to discuss the bond with the town. Is that satisfactory, Mr. Freeman? The, the motion?
Yes, yes, that, that's fine. That, if, if you incorporate the motion that was, that's written that you have, that's, that's what you're doing, and we know that you want the bond to be, uh, form of bond to be worked out with the selectmen, which is fine. The amount is set here, but, you know, we agree with that, yes.
Okay, very good. So the motion uh, proposed by Mr. Akabachi, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Veronica, all in favor, say aye.
Chris Conti, aye.
Richard Sample, aye.
Jim Akabachi, aye.
Nazi Al Palassi, aye. So.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One. Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor. Lot. One, two, three, four. Going to Veronica, oh, and Nazi Al Palassi, aye, I'm sorry, I didn't, but I said, I just wanted to. Okay, before we go forward, so people don't have to wait last night, can do have somebody wants to continue their hearing? Because a lot, a lot of people.
Yes, Kevin Nickerson, the variance for three Oak Hill Road, wants to request an extension to the twenty-seven.
All right, so we have. Should we open and continue?
Yes, open and continue.
All right, we're gonna go off order a little bit, so we, a lot of people sitting waiting, we don't want them to wait. So can we open this uh, on the public hearing? Ken, can you read it?
It's already been read. This is a continuance.
Oh, continuous, okay, so on twenty-six, let me write this down, twenty, industry Oak Hill. So they want the continuous till when?
January twenty-seventh.
Two twenty-seven. Okay, can we have a motion to continue that?
So moved by Jim Akabachi.
I'd like to make a comment before we. So the decision deadline is January twenty-seventh, so I think we need to have an, an extension of time before we make a continuance to that date.
Just in case we don't meet?
Yeah, otherwise, it's it's a constructive grant, right?
Not, the January twenty-seven, twelve PM. So, so we have all to, that night to act on it. So the whole twenty, we have the twenty-seven. Isn't that how it works, Ken?
Uh, no, because you have to file it with the town clerk, so it's the next day.
Okay.
The attorney for Mr. Nickerson is here.
So if a decision's not made correct by the twenty-seventh, this would become a constructive grant.
If the, uh, if the decision wasn't filed with the town clerk by the twenty-seventh, yes.
Right.
Ah, it has to be filed, not, oh, okay, all right. Who's the attorney for Mr. Nickerson?
Chairman, it's attorney Jillian Morton. Um, if you prefer, I can send a, um, another letter continuing that deadline.
Yeah, we're gonna have to. Can you continue with, till February, I mean, January? Uh, sorry, February ten?
Okay.
Can you have a letter to continue it? No, actually, if we meet the ten, you need to file it as well, to the twelfth, to February twelfth. It has to be, all right, it has to be in writing that you extend the deadline and all that, you know what to do. All right, so let's make a motion to continue. All right, so let's make a motion to continue to the twenty seven. Uh, did we say, Jim, you you said to some?
Just amend my motion to the twenty seventh.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second Chris Conti.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Aye, Richard Sample.
Aye, Nazir Al Kalasi.
Veronica?
Veronica Debonese.
Okay, good, so it ca, so on the twenty seven. Oh, bear with me, I gotta write these things down, so we don't go over the hand. All right, uh, okay. Okay, anyone else, uh, Ken wants to continue?
That's all I have.
All right, very good, let's go back in order. Twenty dash nineteen Coastal Cultivars Minor Modification, twenty-three person broke. Okay, who's here from now?
I hear from Coastal Cultivars.
Okay, and Mr. Krish Krishna?
Yeah, thanks for making the time, um, I'm not sure if this is required to go through a minor modification request, but it looks like the C C C is requiring a second security trailer. So we just wanted to bring it to the Z B A and uh, request a minor modifications, our special permit only had one security trailer. Just wanna make sure we're not uh bending any rules or anything like that, and being fully transparent. Happy to answer any questions with uh why, where that need came from and all that.
Is that permanent or temporary?
Um, just to be permanent, yeah.
Oh, if it's permanent, we're gonna we're gonna need some plans, where are you laying that, what it's setting, all these things.
Okay, um, so I guess it's it's permanent for phase one. Once the building's in, there's gonna be um, the security space there. I know when we talked about these trailers in the past, um, the Z B A wanted to hear from the building inspector and fire department, so I did follow up with them this weekend. Um, they're on board with that, but I can pull up the drawing right now, where we're putting it, it's just right next to the security trailer that's already unplanned.
Now, before you guys came for some containers for planting, not for security trailer, that's why we were wanted to hear from the fire department and and you guys changed your mind, and I guess expanded the the perimeter to plant. That's what you, I I, you wanted at the hearing, I don't remember.
Yeah, that that was me, um.
That was you?
Expand the perimeter. Um, this is just, this isn't for growing, and this is security, originally, our plan was that the security trailer was going to be a security office and the storage for the final product. Uh, it's come to our attention, we hired a C C C consultant and our recently hired security contractor, they said, no, it needs to be separate, you have to have a second security trailer for that. Um, this day is basically gonna come when we go for our final license and I'm not gonna be happy with the one trailer, and it's just a problem that we can take care of now, rather than when we're trying to get through final inspection in a couple of months.
Okay. So what kind of trailer, like a, like a camper trailer, do you just put on wheels?
No, um, it'll be similar to the one we have out there now, it looks basically just like a modular building. We can put, you know, facade on there, so it looks nicer, um. It's just basically a, an eight by forty um, secure storage area. And that's what the.
That's, I don't understand, is it for people to sit in it for security or storage?
Uh, storage, so the one that we have there now is for the security officer.
Yeah.
So that's like a more of an office. And then this one would be for actual product storage.
I I I wanna pass the talk to the members, I, let me digest it a little bit, Veronica.
I'm just wondering what kind of security storage you're gonna be putting in there, what what needs to go into a container for security?
Um, so after the cannabis is harvested, before we move it to selling it to dispensaries, we wanna make sure that there is a secure storage area that's adequate. Um, you know, as you know, this is a hundred thousand square foot license, so there, we can't have any chances of having more supplies than we have storage for. Um, obviously, security is of the utmost importance here. So it's not like we're trying to put tools in there or anything like that. It's strictly for um the highest level of access control managers only can get in there.
But if I, if if I recall, last time we we talked about this, uh. I mean, last time that hearing was you guys gonna start plant the small plants or the baby plants, whatever you call them during the construction of the warehouse.
Yeah. So.
So what happened to the warehouse?
I'm sorry?
I mean, what happened, isn't that that twenty thousand square feet building gonna be for that purpose?
It is, uh, I don't think that's gonna be finished by the time these plants are harvested in October, though. Um, you know, we can't even break ground until springtime, so hinging the entire harvest on having a warehouse ready is, I think, unrealistic and would be kinda irresponsible on our part. The C C C would definitely not say yeah, we believe that you're gonna have a secure indoor vault ready for harvest by October. Um, and we're trying to get, we have to get plants in the ground in uh May, otherwise, this whole season is shot.
Okay.
If I may, uh.
Go ahead, yes.
So I'm I'm a little lost here, either I wasn't listening or I didn't hear what you wanted me to hear. Earlier, the question was asked, are the, I I'm assuming that this is like a a storage, a shipping container, a steel shipping container. Uh, based on sizing by forty, yeah, okay, so. Earlier, the question was asked, is this temporary or permanent, and I believe I heard the answer is permanent, but now I'm here in discussion that once the warehouse is completed, the secure storage will be inside the warehouse, so therefore, I would draw the conclusion that this storage container is temporary, what's the status?
Um, so with the phased approach, I'm not trying to beat around the bush here, but it's, we have to assume that uh, the warehouse is not gonna be usable for year one of cultivation. Uh, there's no way to get this cultivation up and running in May, when the.
I understand that, I grasped, I grasped that. But in year two, three, four through nine hundred ninety-nine, there's gonna be a warehouse. What what's happening to that storage container, is it gonna remain, or is it gonna be gone?
We can take that down. Um, at this point, I don't see any reason why we'd wanna get rid of it, you know, we're gonna, it's gonna be a nice one, it's not like we're just dropping some piece of junk on there. Um, but once we build additional indoor storage space, we won't really have the need for it. So, we like the idea of having additional secure storage, because most of the cultivations that are in the state right now are running into shortages of storage. Um, there's special requirements for a vault. So kind of having extra vault space is always a plus. If it's something the town doesn't wanna have out there, we'd be happy to take it out as soon as the building's up.
That was, that was where my confusion rests.
Okay, I hope I cleared it up, happy to talk more on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, okay, Mr. Conti, what do you think?
Um, I agree, I agree with Jim, I, you know, I was a little confused there whether it was gonna be temporary or not. I guess I'd like to see, I don't know, the the plans and where it's going, and what type of container you're gonna be putting in there?
Okay, um, I could do a screen share with the drawing that I shared with the fire chief, I don't know if that's sufficient, or if you'd like me to email it for your review, what uh, what works.
All right, let me, yeah, if you could put on screen, let's hear from Richard, Sample, Mr. Sample, what do you think?
Like to see the location of it, cuz I know at one point they had the other four trailers.
Seven, that was seven.
Seven, four, uh, but the uh, I just would like to know where it's going also.
Sure, let me, uh, never done a screen share before, but uh, let me try this here. Uh, so here's where our current security trailer is right now. Um, we would just keep putting it right here in the blue box, I'm not sure if that's coming through to everyone.
Yep.
So our our main concern first and foremost is obviously fire safety. Um, so we have some material storage, you know, that's secure, that's getting moved out um, as needed to make sure there's clearance um, for the fire trucks to get around there in the event of emergency.
What, what, I'm sorry, sorry, what is the warehouse, I, can you, can you make the picture a little smaller? Yeah.
Um, so here's the road extension we put in, we have currently paved, this is.
Now we see it.
Where the warehouse will be going. Um. And, yeah.
I mean, I, uh I'm re, personally, my opinion, and that's the way I'm heading, but my personal opinion, which I'm, I will vote for. I'm willing to give you that trailer only until you finish the the warehouse, otherwise, we don't wanna start throwing trailers here and there, and they get it rotted, and.
Yeah.
We, this is a, this is a good sized project, and it has to be built according to plan, we don't wanna just start throwing things and it's not documented, or it didn't go through hearings properly. We put a lot of thought in this project, and we, we were very considerate of you as a developer, and we help you as much as we can, so. I I would not like to have that trailer permanent, only will be until you finish construction of the warehouse. If you want it permanent, we would really want, would like to see uh, like a, like a site plan, changing a site plan.
Okay.
Coming on, coming down for a real site plan.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Or major, like a major modification, kinda.
Okay.
Uh, I don't know how the rest of the board feel, if they okay with it to give it to you until you build the building. And we're gonna put a a date for it, we, it cannot be indefinite until you build the building, well, actually, your special permit only good for through two years, so if you don't build it by then, you're gonna have to come back to us.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we'd much rather have it in the building, which is gonna have a lot of product manufacturing, obviously, having high-end climate control and storing the material where you're about to extract, it makes a lot more sense for an operations flow. But it's just, if the C C C doesn't give us final um, in May, then this season's not happening, so we have to have proof that we have secure storage on site in May when they come out, and obviously, yeah.
I understand, now keep in mind, the warehouse. If if you guys don't put first footing, the footing in two years from the permits granted, then you have to come back before us, your permit will die, just keep that in mind.
Yeah, of course, we have drawings for that now, we're just making some.
No, no, you have to put concrete on the ground, or the permit would die.
Okay.
All right, just tell your partners or whatever, all right, uh, let's go back, Jim, how you like what I said?
I'm 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 following along, I'm okay, I um I'm sensitive to the fact that these folks are gonna pay a a respectable amount of money for a secure or a securable. Either it's a storage container or a trailer, the plan uses the term trailer, I think it's a storage container, but I'm I'm leaning towards um, the condition that when the warehouse is built, it gets removed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Sample, you good with that, like per, temporarily, basically?
Temporary trailer until it's the warehouse is built, I'm fine with that.
Okay, Mr. Conti?
I also agree, temporary is good with me.
And Veronica?
I agree, temporary.
Okay, and this does not relieve you from any other permitting, for instance, fire building permit, that you have to follow up with this?
Of course.
Okay, okay, that being said, anyone in the audience wanna comment on that? I hear none, okay, Jim, or or somebody for motion?
Chris Smith has something to say, fire department.
Smith, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's all right, sir, um, our, our, we conditionally agreed to this verbally, um, we just wanted to see a plan where you're gonna relocate that material storage to ensure that we have that access. Um, I don't wanna hold up your vote for seeing the plan, but if you can make that a condition, that they provide a site plan where the material storage will be relocated to.
Relocated or reduced in size, is that it, Chris?
We just need, we need to maintain our twenty-foot access around all the structures on that property.
So as long as they show a plan, get your apparatus back there.
Yep, we'll be fine with that.
And and is here, is here in the requirement?
Yeah, and I'll not know, we are working on a plan with the C C C to actually just till our waste material back into the field, which would totally eliminate the need for that material storage. Um, but since that's still in the works, I'll I'll get you an updated site plan on that.
Well, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that that's why I I made that comment, that doesn't relieve you from any other board permitting or departments, so you you apparently, you're gonna see Captain Chris and you have to approve it as well as the commissioner and so, and everyone else, I'm sure. All right, so that being said, what's the wishes?
Um, mo, motion to approve with conditions discussed, stand out, you know, removal removal when the warehouse is getting an occupancy permit.
Okay, so we have a motion to grant this uh, the the storage container and the storage uh, container will, I guess, the permit will die when they build the the warehouse, and that's within two years, apparently. Uh, do I have a second on that?
Rick Sample, second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Jimmy, aye.
Chris Conti.
Rick Sample, aye.
Veronica Debonese, aye.
And Nazir Al Kalasi, aye, thank you, it carries. Okay, very good. Okay, also, Mister twenty-one dash twenty was Mister Howard Markley Junior, uh, ten thirteen street, uh, and that was a variance. And a gentleman asking for a waiver, if you guys recall, we, they didn't show up last time, and we we uh, denied it without prejudice, and I guess the gentleman asking to reapply uh, was waiving the fee. He would like us to waive the fee, so.
The fee is three hundred dollars, they would not waive the the public notification fee, the butters and notices and the newspaper notice.
Okay, what do you guys think? Who wants to stop?
I I don't mind going first, if it's okay, my feeling is my feeling is the town should not bear any marketing costs, so obviously, he has to pay for the re-advertising, we didn't cause him not to appear. Um, on the other hand, if there was if there was truly a misunderstanding or a miscommunication, um the fee, I I I'm, I lean towards waiving it once, but again, not the associated costs. But um, I would do it with the um with strongly telegraphing the fact that this applicant has you know, there's a, there's a saying, none so dumb as those who wish to be. I don't wanna get the feeling that this guy is plain dumb. But I would be willing to waive the fee this time.
Is is the applicant here?
Yeah, Nazir, hi, Dominic Camerano.
Yeah.
You hear me?
Yes, let me ask you a question, why you guys didn't show up to the hearing, or right?
Not, Nazir, uh, I I have to take responsibility, um, I I had it done for December eighth, you know, December sixth, I was going to um, pu- put it off another month, and um, I had the wrong date, it was a tough week for me, as my dad was in the hospital real sick. I do take the responsibility for it, I would be willing to pay, you know, the fees that I have to, I would just, would like some help under three hundred dollars, um. Yeah, and I'm at the uh, the board's discretion, and I would appreciate it, as far as advertising or whatever else uh, Jim mentioned that has to be paid, I would be more than happy to incur that expense.
All right, Veronica, what do you think?
Um. Yeah, I don't have any problem with waiving the fee, I know that he's went back and forth um, with his engineer to get those plans um in agreement with what we were looking for, the only thing I would say is, um, I'd like to see him not miss any other meetings, because the neighbors were present, and it's their time, um, not just ours.
With that, uh, Mr. Sample? You?
I have questions.
No question, Chris?
Uh, I'm fine with waiving the fees.
Okay, all right, can we have a motion then, anyone else wanna add anything? I hear none, let's get a motion.
I just be, I I'm willing to move the question, but I I just wanna be double sure, there's nobody online neighbors or anything that, you know, got their microphone. Neighbors or anything that, you know, got their microphone muted. I was just gonna give it a second and then say so moved. And I guess we've given them enough time, okay, so I move to waive the. The fee and re-entertain this application.
Have a second?
I second, Chris Conti.
On a favor, say aye?
Jim, aye?
Chris Conti, aye?
Veronica Debonese, aye?
And Nazir Akalasi, aye, but, but, Richard, I'm sorry, did you vote, did you say?
Richard Sample, aye?
Thank you, I'm, I'm sorry, it's so confusing on the Zoom thing, so, okay, no fees, thank you.
Um, excuse me, so the next meeting is?
No, no, you gotta file from scratch.
Go to see, I'll go see Sonja and file, thank you, Nazir, thank you, board, very much, Happy New Year, have a good evening.
Good night, Dominic.
All right, continue public hearing, uh, twenty-two dash twenty Frederick Mannix on a site plan review two thirty-eight and two forty Sandwich Road.
Uh, um, the name is Savannah, my daughter's name is up, but Fred Mannix, um, and, and I'd like to, uh. Say thank you to the board for the, uh, the help you gave me, um, and along with some of the neighbors, we, we made some changes. Um, that were recommended earlier during the process and I, I think it's, uh, turned into a much, much nicer looking project as a result of that. Um, I, I submitted some plans for the board to review. Uh, a set of architectural plans, it's a full set of plans for the, uh, for the building itself. Uh, the site plan, uh, is the site layout plan and along with the fire department truck access plan that I, I just received, uh, two days ago. And um, I intend to, uh. Hopefully meet with Captain Smith sometime next week if he's available or discuss it over the phone and, uh, I think the plan. Shows a much, uh, improved access from what we proposed the first time. Um, as far as the building goes, the, uh, main reason that we're here tonight is to see if I can get a, a sense of the board's feeling on, on what we've done and what. Hopefully have accomplished by making the changes that, uh, were brought, brought to our attention, the, um. The building is, um. Okay, okay, thank you, Ken, I don't, I don't know how to do this, uh, so there's the, there's the site layout plan, as you can see, uh. We, we changed a few things around, we set the building back a little further and the lot created more of a landscape area in the front. And, uh, put some jogs in the building that, that I think improved the look of it greatly, uh, Ken, do you have the fire truck? Plan? Yeah, thank you, uh, I know Chris is on, on the line, but I, I just want to point out that we, we used the new, the new fire truck as a, as a template. And as you can see from the red lines, I, I know you can't make, it's kind of scratchy looking, but it basically shows the, the fire truck, the ladder truck. Being able to access just about every point in the building directly. Um, it was brought out of the previous, uh, meeting about that, uh, maintenance building, getting it, uh, further up into the triangle, that was a great idea. And as you can see, the fire truck now has not only the room that it had before, but it has much more room for, you know, maneuvering that, that, uh, backup for that, uh, that three-point turn. Uh, I, Ken, I, I don't know, it, it, can we? I guess go, go to the, uh. Yeah, uh, that's the parking garage plan, uh.
If, can I interrupt you here, have you sorted out with the commissioner how many parkings you need, that you, did you, did he come up with the decision on number of parking?
We, we spoke with the commissioner and he, the, the decision that we made, uh, when I, before the prior meeting was that, uh, he was gonna require sixty spaces. We provided sixty-four, uh, he would like to see the plans though to, to make sure that. What he, what he, uh, we agreed to basically is something, uh, that, that, uh, he, he's comfortable with agreeing to. Just, just like you did in the prior meeting, you'd like to see what, what we're gonna do, so, uh, I haven't been able to put these plans together for him. But I intend to give them to him, I, I, uh, we'll meet with him and, and hopefully, uh. He goes along with what we, uh, talked about, when we talked about these parking before, uh, Mr. Chairman. We didn't have a, a fully developed plan and we just showed him the, uh, original site plan. Uh, so I'll, I'll get that, that'll be part of our presentation package that we're gonna have to make for, uh. Before we make a decision, we're not looking for decisions tonight, we're looking for direction.
Okay. Uh, do you have a, like, the, the facade, okay?
Yes.
The last two.
Yeah, what, what, what we did, what we added to the plan, uh, just briefly is that we, we put the, uh, assisted living care and the memory care as alternates, I know we've talked about how memory care. Is something that, uh, an operator would want to get involved with, so we, we came up with two different plans for the third, for the first floor. I, I don't have to go through them, you can look at them, but it, it shows. Um. What we intend to do with, with either or, it wouldn't be both. So there'd be more units, uh, single, single units if memory care was not included and if we use memory care, it becomes a common area, we also added the kitchen. And the, um. Other spaces where the prior plan would had, uh, it was just blank, so it, it kind of gives you an idea what the design is, a little better idea than we had before. Uh, now, Ken, if, if, if you don't mind, I think it's A twelve.
For the facade?
We're looking for.
The facade?
It's the last two of the package.
The last two of the package, A twelve is the view from Sandwich Road of the building. Number, number fifteen, I think of, I don't know, I don't know what, what, would it be number fifteen, yeah, there you go, thank you. Uh, that's the view from Sandwich Road, which in a prior, uh, presentation, we showed you the, the boards. Uh, this is a much. Much modified, uh, same view, same perspective, but I, I, I think a much different building and I hope everybody likes it. It, it's very similar to your suggestion, Mr. Chairman, about the brick, which I thought wasn't gonna look so good, but. Uh, you were right, it, it, it's, it's gonna look nice, I think, but, uh, hopefully the board. Uh, can look at this and, and see what we intend to do. Nothing has changed in the dimensions except, uh, we bumped out the bays to make it more prominent and if you go to the next, uh, slide, uh, please. You'll see a view from, uh, the opposite end and, and we added a gable, it's, it's, it's not occupied, it's just a false gable roof. To make it look more, uh, a little bit more different and open porches to make the whole thing look, uh. Uh, a little more friendly, I guess, than it was before, it was, it was kind of a. A stock building, so. Now, the end, the, the, the rest of the, the project, we, we didn't change anything except make it look a lot better, I think.
Right. All right, we're gonna start, Veronica, what, what do you think with the changes?
Um, I like the changes, I like that it. Has some dimension to it, um.
Can you bring the other page, Ken, can you bring back the front facade, please? Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to see, I guess, um. I don't, not trying to get away from the building because we're talking about the building and. What it's gonna look like, but I'd like to see what the landscaping.
Right.
Is gonna be and I like the fact that you've actually moved it away from the road somewhat and set it back more, I think. Um. It won't see, because it's kind of like, especially the way the road goes down there, it almost, it's. Creates like the building's looming over the. The road, but at this point where it's set back, I think it's a little bit better, but, um. I like, I like what you've done.
Thank you, Veronica, would, you know, uh, what doesn't show here and we intend to get a landscape architect involved to, to. Again, I, I'd like to make another presentation with the, with the full package, but, uh, I, I believe we can save that there's three large trees in the front. And there's a couple of large trees on, on Plymouth Road and the site plan, it doesn't show in the site plan, but those, it's, it's been located so that those trees can be saved. And, 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 uh, it, it, I think it'll look nice, they're, they're real old trees that are there and, and they can be saved, one, one of them is a multi. Multi trunks and I think one of the trunks looks a little bit bad, that, that would be an arborist would, would trim it. But we, we don't want to take care, we don't want to get rid of those trees and on Plymouth Road, I think I can save all the trees on Plymouth Road, uh. You know, that we talked about before with the neighbors. But I, I can't get a landscape architect involved until I'm sure that we're not gonna keep changing the plan, that, that's, that's just a practical thing.
Okay, I have a comment, you see that gable? I think that gable is way too high. If you were, if you were away from roots on Sandwich Road like a hundred feet, I would say that gable is fine, and the roadside. Oh, yeah, the other side, the other way.
The other way?
The street side. That.
Yeah, that's, that's aside from, uh, yeah.
Uh, so the gable is too high and too invasive, I think you should do a hip. I mean, because you have one, two, three, four stories time. Look, you have about thirty, almost forty feet without the gable.
Right.
So if you could hip it in the front or hip the roof, so it's not.
I see what you mean, yeah, yeah, we could, we could do something like that, I mean, that, uh, again.
The proportion of that, it's way, it's the size of two and a half floors.
Yeah, we wanted to make it, uh, more prominent, I agree with you, it, it, part of it is the, I think the drawing kind of exaggerate, I'm not sure what the height is, uh, at, at this point. But I, I'll look into that, what, what I would do is, uh. I, I'm not just trying to be agreeable, it's just an easy thing, it, in other words, if the footprint doesn't change, the gables and, and some of that stuff can be fine-tuned, uh, a lot easier, you know?
Because you're talking about, on that peak, you probably have fifty-five feet and you're only like thirty feet from Sandwich Road, that's way too invasive. So if you have where that circle is and hip it down, it blends it right in and it'll take that, that big edge out.
Well, we, I, I, I think I'll, I'll work with, uh, Lydia, the architect is on, on this, uh, Zoom meeting and, and, uh, I'm, I'm sure we can do something to make it a little less, uh. I, 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 I agree with you.
Uh, because look over there, you have the hip on the other side, you see it, like, it's like a hip, if that was a.
Yeah, that's, that's a tower, Mr. Chairman, that, yeah, that, that's, that's a different, I didn't want to duplicate it.
Right, but the way the roof goes, it takes the invasive off, the invasion off, this is like very invasive.
We, we might, I, I'm not to design it here and, and waste anybody's time, but, but, uh, we could wrap around that man side and, and, and maybe. Do something different with the porch, I, I've got an idea from, just listen to you talking, I, I, I kind of. I, I'm trying to make it look like a, a three-family building, it's, it's kind of big for that, so I, I'll, I'll do something with it and, and present it.
Okay.
Is part of the, um, is, is part of the attempt here to kind of. Screen that, uh, solarium proposal from, from, from Cranberry Highway?
Well, I think what's gonna happen, Jim, is, is the, the solarium is still in the back third, we didn't move the solarium, we left it in the back third, uh, you, you really don't see it from, uh, and from Cranberry Highway. I, I don't think we have to screen it with, with something that's bigger, it, it wasn't an attempt to screen it, it was an attempt to make the building look a little more friendly, but. I, 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 I think maybe at that end, because it's kind of obscured by Cranberry Highway, we might want to wrap the man side around up there. And not put the gable in, that's, that's what I'm thinking as I'm looking at it. I don't know if that's, uh, that's a solution, we, if we come back with, with the, the, the biggest problem I have is the drainage calculations and, and, and that kind of stuff that we have to deal with. Uh, some of the things we're talking about so far would have nothing to do with making those changes, I could, I could pull the trigger on all of that work. And, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect anything.
Right. Right.
Give you some alternates, I think we could, we could come back, uh, and, and certainly give a couple of alternates to, to see what everybody thinks.
That, let me, I, I guess for everyone, so Mister Mannix, right, Mister Mannix, right?
Yeah, not.
Mister Mannix wants to hear from us somehow. If we like it, not like it, give a comment so he could go full-blown on the site plan, correct?
I'm sorry?
You, you need to hear from us, uh, like how we like it, don't, whatever, you'd like to see a positive. Comment, so you could go like full-scale on the site plan.
Exactly, because, but changing entrances and, and it, it just changes all the drainage calc, you know?
Right, right, let me hear from Mister Sample, Mister Sample. Richard?
Here is that railing all the way around up at the solarium, is that gonna be a gathering area or is that just you're trying to screen the solarium, I didn't hear the.
We, we're, that's, that's intended to be a, a deck up there off the solarium to, to be a, a space for people to, uh, in the summertime, of course. Uh, to gather up, up at the, uh, in the open air and, and, uh, and not at the ground level, I think, I think we talked about this way back that the, uh. The site itself is kind of depressed and, uh, from the highway around it and from Plymouth Road, so we felt that having some kind of a recreational area. Up top would be a nice amenity for the, for the property.
Looking at the, uh, another question about the fire engine plan that you had there, I did see that the fire engines were coming and going off of Plymouth Ave. And then thought when our discussions that there was a gate or something that you were putting up there, but, uh, again. Uh, like to see the plans get completed as much as we can and we can really go from there, but I understand that you're looking for feedback from us.
Yeah.
But that's all I have, I, I just.
We, we did not, uh, to address that, we didn't forget the gate, but that was something I was gonna discuss with the fire department and, and explain. We don't want to just draw something down, I, I don't know if they'll go along with it or not, but, uh, uh, we made it a pad so that, uh, it could be used. A truck wouldn't get bogged down, but it's not a driveway, it's, it's a, it's an access, uh, uh, point and I, I would, uh. Defer to, uh, the captain and, and talk to him about that next week and see if there's something we can work out for, for that, make sure nobody uses it.
Right. What'd you say, Richard, we didn't hear you?
Thank you, I don't have any other questions.
Uh, uh, Chris?
Okay, um, yeah, I was kind of surprised to see that this was on the, um, agenda today because I thought it was continued to the thirteenth. Uh, because I know some people that were gonna, uh, attend, attend it, but, um, but from, um, from what I see, I'm glad he pushed the building back. Uh, from the road because I thought it was way too close to the road, I, I kind of think this whole bit footprint is, is kind of big for this, this lot of land myself. Um, I think it takes up. You know, most, most of the whole, uh, space of the land there, uh, the building, I think it's, I don't know, it, it seems really tall and I think in that neighborhood, I don't know if it might look. You know, out of place, but, um, I, I, I think it's too big, that's, that's my opinion.
All right. Uh, I just look at my records last time, we did continue to January sixth, we didn't say thirteenth, I, I wrote it down, yeah. So, uh, I, I, I guess down Plymouth, Plymouth, uh, Street or Ave. That's on the fire department, gonna have to decide if it's gonna stay open or a gate. Uh, the most, the most important thing, I believe right now. We need to start doing some, like real concrete work, so either we gotta send this gentleman, say. We somehow like what we see, go ahead and spend your whatever thousands of dollars on site plan. Or we're gonna say we don't like it, nobody's gonna hold us to it, but it'll, it'll be good to give our word as an honest opinion. If everybody's okay with that, so we don't have them spend, like I said, all this thing and come back, say, oh, we don't like it. Is, is the board member ready to give some feedback, positive, negative, you could say, my feedback is negative, so this gentleman understands what he's going. Uh, you don't have to say you like it or whatever. Play on the words, you, you could say, I like it or I don't like it, now keep in mind. On the building, I'm assuming if we say, okay, change this facade here, this porch here, I'm sure the applicant would, would have minded. But pretty much the footprint for him to go out and start doing the site work, this is two, three months engineering. I mean, at least two months of engineering and work. Uh, is the board ready to give this gentleman, that doesn't mean an approval, like a feedback? So we start, Jim, what do you have?
I'm okay with what I've seen so far, I'd encourage him to continue to spend money like a madman.
Veronica?
Um, I am in agreement with Chris, Mister Conti, I feel that this building is massive for where it is, um. You know, it's. Really gonna stand out, um, in the neighborhood. And I, you know, the height is still, I. There were, it's a lot of discussion about the height, but I don't know if there have been any changes to the height.
Well, we, 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 he wants a, he needs a variance for it. And that's why we discuss and all this before we, we go forward and the guy spends these thousands of dollars, so, so. Uh, before I go with you, so let's make sure, um, Mister Conti, your comments?
Yes, I, well, I think I, I told you my comments that I think it's, it's way too big for that piece of property, I think it's way too tall and, um. Right now, I, I guess I. right now, I, I guess I'd like to hear from the public too.
Right. We'll get to the public. We'll get to the public. Okay, so that's two. And Mr. Sample, Richard?
I, I also agree that the, uh, it's very intrusive. It's huge. There's a lot going on in that small lot. Um, I'd like to see it a little smaller. I'm, I'm with Veronica and Chris Conti.
That's your verdict, Richard. I mean, Mr. Mannix. Uh, before.
Can I make another comment?
Um, sure, go ahead.
I'd like to just comment, um, uh, Mr. Mannix, I know you are really happy about this change with the, the peak, uh, that you had added. Um, but it increases the height in that area. And so for that reason, I'm really not, I'm really not thrilled about that. You, you said it's not gonna be an area that's functioning. It's really more just aesthetics and kind of aesthetics-wise. If that's the reason, I would say it's, you know.
Yeah. Well, I, 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 I was trying to, I, I thought I was trying to respond to a, uh, a, a process that, that I was a part of and, and, uh, that, that's why we're here to, to see, see if I, if I got it right. And, and I think, I think it is, we don't need the height. The only reason we need the height for the building is just to remind the board is that, that the building itself, uh, meets the requirements. It's under forty feet. Uh, it's the solarium and that little tower that we talked about earlier on, on the process to, to create a nice atmosphere for the residents. You know, I, I think it's a beneficial, uh, thing for the people who are there to have the solarium. Uh, it's, again, no one's living up there. It's not being used for, for, uh, um, any, any kind of process except, except maybe, uh, a beauty parlor or something like, you know, something, something that the residents could use, um, to, you know, it would be nice to have, uh, that it wouldn't be that bigger deal to put it up there. The solarium is a, is a healthy, uh, amenity that would be, I think, beneficial to whoever's living there. That, that's, that's the reason for it. That, 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 there's no height for, we're not using that height for anything else except for that purpose.
Can I ask you, um, what is the height? Because I'm looking at the elevations and, and you made a comment that the building is within the forty feet and I'm seeing that it's about thirty-six feet from the, let's see, what is it? The first, second, to the roof, to the flat part of the roof.
Yeah.
Everything above that, uh, you have four more feet to stay within the guideline. Um, and I know you're trying to use the roof. I think it's great that you have the, um, the, the fencing around the roof so that that's an area that residents can go to and congregate and, like you said, get away from the, the look of maybe the highway and kind of create another, an additional space in that area that's some can be manufactured in a way.
Right, right.
But the solarium, why is the solarium as high as it, how, how high is that solarium? Because if that's at the, starting at thirty-six, it looks like it goes well above fifty. And then you have two additional peaks. Um, and I'll tell you, I'm looking, um, at the elevation page, which is, um,
A nine?
On the town website, the north elevation is basically what I'm looking at.
We're seeing that on the screen now.
Yeah, on the screen now. That, it's A nine. Yeah, I, I believe that's it, one of them. It, it's on, it's on a lot of drawings.
Yeah.
I think A nine shows the solarium better. That's just the back. Can, can you please go to A nine, Ken?
I think we're there.
No, this, yeah, this one here shows the windows and everything. Because, because the question was, why is it so high? The, the tower is high to, to swallow the elevator over travel and, and, and to create a, a dramatic space. There's no other reason for it. It's only about thirty by thirty. I think at one other presentation, it, it, it takes about less than two percent of the floor of the roof area. The solarium is high in order to make the windows high so that the sun can beat down in the solarium and, and, and get to the back of it. It's just the design of a solarium. It's, it's, the structure is, is, uh, is kind of hollow. You're only, you're only about, I'm, I'm, I'm six feet tall and getting a little shorter as, as the, as the years go, but, but people are about between five and six feet is where their head is. And, and, uh, there's another five or six feet or seven feet above. It's just an airy space. It's, it's healthier. It's a nice space to be in. Uh, it's like an atrium space.
But what about, what if you were to, instead of having the windows, you had skylights? You're gonna get a lot of light just, just putting them on the roof rather than creating more height to that area?
Well, uh, you know, um, skylights bring in a lot of light, but the idea here is to bring in the sun. So it's a solarium. It's not, it's not, it, 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 you know, without the height, the, the angle of the sun and, and in the wintertime, it would go, it wouldn't go in the skylight. It would, it would come right into the wall. It's basically creating a window wall, uh, that, that's high enough for the sun to penetrate back. So you'd be sitting there. I, I, I have my, I built my own house that way. It faces due south and it could be a nice, even today, uh, we had to open the doors. It's, it's eighty-five degrees in there, uh, because, you know, it, it, it gets warm. It's nice. So that's why, that's why the height is, it's not just a design look. It's, it's actually a practical, uh, reason for it. It's like insulation in a wall. You know, you don't see it, but the more, the more insulation you have, the better the wall performs and the better the solarium performs because the sun, the sun beats down in there. The idea is to, uh, get a, uh, the feeling of the sun without the cold air.
I just, I just want to say, you, you also mentioned that it was because of the elevator over travel, the, there's the reason for the height of the roof, right?
Well, it hides it. The elevator over travel doesn't count on, on, uh, on building height. You know, that, that's, that, that's just, uh, it, it's something that sticks up. It's, it's a mechanical thing, but it's like a chimney, you know, that you don't count the chimney. But, uh, that tower would hide the, uh, the elevator over travel, but that isn't the main reason for it. The main reason is when you get off the elevator, it's kind of a gathering spot and it's, that's about, I don't know, twenty-four feet high, twenty-two feet high for thirty, thirty by thirty roughly. It's just a dramatic space. Uh, it's an amenity to make people that live there feel good. And I don't think, you can see it from the road. You know, it, it's set, it's set way back, so I don't think it impacts anybody, but it, it serves the benefit. Uh, it, does it have to be that high? Probably not. Uh, but the solarium, if it, if it uses skylights, it won't work as a solarium. It'd just be a building up there that nobody would use. So we, I, 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 I don't know if we'd put it in. If we don't put the solarium in, uh, the, uh, the building would still function, but it wouldn't, wouldn't have that space. That was the reason for it.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience, anyone want to speak on that matter? I hear none. So, uh.
All right. Well, I was just, I'm sorry, I was just clicking. Um, sorry. I'm Maureen Calery. Maureen Calery.
Yep.
And I, I guess I just want to say that I think the building is very attractive. I think it's very aesthetically pleasing. Um, I do love that, um, extra, I don't know if you call it a hip roof, roof, whatever you call it. I think that really made a difference because otherwise it does look sort of cold, if you will. Um, I think if I were putting a family member in this home, I would love for them to have a room to go to where they, you know, wintertime, there's so much sun coming through and warmth and makes them happy and, you know, all that good stuff. So I'm, I'm, I'm not drinking Kool-Aid tonight, but I really, I do, I do love the look of the building. I think it's great. And for that space, I can't honestly say myself exactly what is surrounding that and whether or not it looks too invasive for that space. But Wareham is up and coming. It's growing. People need space. People are gonna need places, a place to live and, and put people close to them, you know, that live here. So I think the space is needed. It's my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. And I, I just need your address for the record.
Sure. It's eight Cranberry Grove Way.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? I hear none. I do have to agree with what the lady just said. Uh, the solarium, I think if he, if this gentleman wasn't building a solarium, I think we should ask him to build one. It makes a big difference for seniors to live there, or fifty-five or older, sixty-five, whatever the age there. The question is, I would like to ask the other three, I guess Jim is on board, the other three members to.
Given, uh, Chairman Akalasty. You're very quick when you, uh, ask if there's anybody in the audience that wants to talk. I can't unmute my mic fast enough for you.
Okay, well, we, we're not, we're not closing the meeting yet, so. Uh, let me, let me finish my statement. I'll get back to you, sir. I'm sorry, this is the problem with Zoom. I hear them, but bear, just gotta bear with us. So, uh, I, I see Mr. Akvachi agrees with that. The rest of the board member, uh, I, I would like you to consider, make your comment based on the project without the solarium because uh, make your comment if you, if it's too big for you or too small, forget the solarium. Just the project itself. I don't think the solarium, it's, it's very, I think it's a very, very good plus for the whole project and for the, for the area as well. Just think about it and let me hear from the other gentleman. What are you guys thinking about it? Of course, you don't have to give your answer now, but. All right, sir, your name and address?
It's Chris Smith, Wareham Fire.
Oh, hi, Captain. Oh, that was you.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Um, go ahead.
Mr. Buckland, could you go to the, uh, site plan? So, um, Mr. Mannix, I agree, we should probably get together, um, one more time. I wasn't able to give a full review. Um, I was asked to hold off until these changes were incorporated. So I didn't, uh, I just saw this, uh, I believe it was yesterday.
Yeah.
Go to, uh, Mike Pimentel at J C Engineering to discuss a couple of things of concern. Um, nothing, you're getting closer to fulfilling the requirements of the fire code. Um, the one thing, when we had our first, um, introductory meeting on this project, I know none of the zoning board was at that meeting. Uh, Mr. Buckland held it for town officials, people give their input. Um, one of the things that I mentioned at that meeting was you take the assisted living, um, home over, uh, at Rosebrook. Um, I did a run comparison or run, um, got some data. We responded to over a hundred emergency calls for service at that location in one year. So this site plan fits the most, most of the site, site plan, fits the requirements of our fire code. But what I don't see here that we have at the other assisted living is a place for the ambulance. You get a hundred trips a year. That's three, four times a week. You got an ambulance sitting here. Um, that ambulance is followed by one to two police cars and a fire truck. So I would love to see some type of, in, in the assisted living project over at Rosebrook, there's the turnout, you're out of traffic, you got a place to park.
Uh huh.
It's a dedicated fire lane that people aren't supposed to go into. I don't see that in this project. Um, and that's something, is it, it's really not required by code, but knowing that the traffic that we're having from our ambulances, our fire trucks, our police cars, they're gonna really tie up traffic for, for the employees, for residents. You know, they could be there thirty, forty minutes with their lights and sirens on and they've got road widths of twenty feet. Um, or, or driveway width of twenty feet. That's tight. And you know, our guys don't park, uh, on the edge of the road.
Yeah, yeah. No, I understand.
So that's, that's something, um, that the board didn't hear and I wanted them to hear, um, so they take that into consideration. Like I said, it's not part of our code. Um, it's not a requirement, but being such a tight site with very, very small, um, driveway widths, you really don't allow for those emergency vehicles to, to do their job.
Well, what we're trying to do, Chris, thank you. What, what we're trying to do is balance the, the, you know, the look with the practicality and the practicality for, for life safety is, is a primary practicality. Uh, I, I hear what you're saying and I'm looking at the plan now. Uh, I, I, I don't know if you noticed in the upper right-hand side, the, the, uh, the east side of the plan, we've got a pretty wide driveway there uh, for the fire truck to back up and, and, and maybe I can, I can swap some, uh, impervious surface by narrowing it that down a little bit, uh, and, and creating something, uh, closer. I'm assuming you want something near the front door.
Yeah, the ambulance is gonna respond to the front door every time.
Right, right. So I, I could see some, I could see some, uh, areas in there. Uh, you know, again, this is something I would talk to with the building commissioner. We, we have four more parking spaces than we believe are required. And, and, um, I, I have an idea just listening to you that I could probably create an ambulance area and, and, uh, create some other parking space with some, uh, impervious surface for extra parking and still stay within the, uh, the guidelines. That, that, that would be something you and I could talk about. I think, I think what I'd like to, I, I don't expect you to, uh, use this as a, uh, a plan right now. You only got it quickly.
No, and I'm not gonna comment on like hydro applications and stuff like that. We could talk.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think we worked that out. I, I, I think, I, I hope you agree that we, we made the access. You know, I knew at that first meeting, I talked about knocking a corner off the building, but I think we've done a lot more than knock a corner off the building. We've made the, the access really pretty complete. It's almost three hundred sixty-degree access in this building.
That is true, yes. Um, one other consideration is, um, private ambulance service too will be, they'll be here. If, every day with multiple ambulances taking people to doctor's appointments and, and doing what they do.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'll take that. I know, you know, as far as the ambulance service and everything, I, I think our location, uh, close to Toby Hospital uh, is, is a good one for the, for the kind of needs that people have. I, 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 uh, I'm not surprised there's a hundred runs a year. I mean, it, it, it's a needy population. I'm, I'm joining it slowly but surely, but, you know, eh, there is a need for this in, in, in the town and, and, uh, um, I, I don't think this, this making, making space for the ambulances, uh, I think is critical and I'll, I'll, I'll get that to you.
All right, uh, going back to Mr., uh, is there anyone else in the audience want to speak?
Nazir, I think there was a, a letter sent and two from, uh, one of the abutters. I think it was, um, Nancy, Nancy Angus, that, that, that she sent in that maybe we should take a look at that letter also.
Where, where's the letter? Do you have it, Ken?
Somebody, somebody wake Ken up. He put that thing on, he's looking for it, I bet. Ken's mic is, there it is. It's back on.
I'm looking for the file.
All right, while, while you're looking, Ken, I guess me and Jim are the easiest. So what would Veronica and Mr. Sample and Mr. Conte would like to give Mr. Mannix, like affirmative suggestion or opinion before, like, like I said, before this guy go out and spend thousands of dollars? Veronica, all right, let's hear this letter first and you could go. Do you want to read it, Ken? Jim?
Sure. Reapplication by, for special permit variance and site plan review for two thirty-eight and two forty Sandwich Road. The project by Frederick Mannix trustee. I am a trustee of the Nancy C. Angus Revocable Trust, which is in a butter to the referenced, uh, project under consideration by your board. After review of the plan and comments from neighbors at the time, at the initial phase of this hearing, the trust respectfully opposes the reference application. Our concerns are both as in a butter and as members of the community. The plan is grossly out of scale with the land. That plan review under the purpose section of Wareham zoning bylaw is undertaken to ensure that a com, a proposed project contributes a suitable development and will not result in a detriment to the neighborhood. The adverse impacts to the butters and the neighborhood in general of increased traffic noise, diminished light, light pollution and air quality, safety and quality of life for a project this large in scope on a parcel of land of this limited size can only result in significant detriments. The proposed project is a, is a foot, it is too big for its shoe. As a small business owner located just a few feet from the proposed project, I can tell you firsthand that both left and right hand turns on the Sandwich Road of this section of, of road are dangerous. One can only imagine when adding, uh, number of senior residents, their guests, employees and service providers, including, uh, trash disposal trucks and emergency vehicles in and out of the proposed facility will, will go, do, um, will do to further impact traffic safety. As far as the requested variances are concerned, it is clear that the hardship from which relief is sought is hardship resulting from the over built design as proposed. My Massachusetts law does not support the granting of variances that are issued to remedy hardships caused by the applicant's own making. If the building is significantly scaled back, there is no need for a setback. If the building is significantly scaled back, there is no need for a setback variance. If the main building is significantly scaled back, there's no need for height variance. The need is hardship expressed by the applicant's council to create recreational areas with good height, with good light and good air quality are conditions created only by their choice and the design of this project. Sadly, if the variances are granted and the site plan is recommended, approved by this board, these actions by the board will create substantial noise and light pollution, shadowing of surrounding properties, air quality problems, traffic and safety problems for the abutters, residents, residential and commercial alike. The terrain of the land and the shape of the land may be limiting factors to what the applicant may be able to use the property for. However, these are many, there are many other economically viable options for the use of the property other than the one proposed, particularly at its current size and design. Thank you for consideration and our objectives, objections. Sincerely, Nancy S Angus trustee.
Thank you, Ken. Going back to Veronica. So, can you give your wishes?
Veronica might have her microphone.
Okay, Mr. Conti, so, so what, what do you like to see in this project? What do you like to see? I know you don't like it too high, too big, so what do you like to see? Like what you got, what do you like to see that Mr. Mannix do?
I, I guess I would like to, I, I would prefer it to be scaled down and maybe drop a couple of floors.
Couple of, two floors?
Two floors. Keep the solarium up at the top, drop two floors and bring it down and make it a little bit smaller.
Okay, Mr. Sample. What do you think?
Look, we're in with Chris Conti and that letter states quite a bit of information that I agree on. It seems to be the building so massive that he's looking for all these variances, so if it's scaled back, we can be eliminating the variances, so. I'm all with Chris Conti. I think there's a lot going on. I need it scaled back. One floor, but two floors would be better if you want to keep the solarium.
Okay, Veronica.
I'm in agreement with Mr. Conti and Mr. Sample.
All right, Mr. Mannix, that's your answer.
Okay.
I mean.
No solarium.
No, no solarium. Just no solarium at all and with four stories?
Listen, I, it, it's not, I'm, I'm kind of joking with that. You know, I, I, I hear the letter, I, I don't, obviously, I don't agree with the letter mainly for the fact that I don't believe that a, an assisted living home of this caliber, this close to the hospital in a town like Wareham is any kind of detriment to the neighborhood. I, I take offense at that. It's not detrimental. It's, it's supplemental. And, and for me to be accused of providing light and air for the occupants of a building, I think is ludicrous. Of course, I want to provide light and air. And, and, and you know, it's not taking anybody's light and air away, certainly driving down Sandwich Road. So, having said that, again, I, I would like to go through this process. The solarium is something that I, I thought was an amenity that would be good for the, for the town in, in general, because it would be good for the inhabitants of the town. Well, this is, this is not a fifty-five or older, this is for people who are wanting to look for assisted living because they don't want to live alone. And you know, that's, that's the reason for the, for the project. The second thing is, there are some, I, I don't need the side lot, I don't need the variance in the side lot for, it's only for the maintenance building, which I've quite frankly put quite a distance away from the Angus property. But I, I'm certainly could, could move that closer if, if she would like it. The second thing is, you know, the building meets the dimensional requirements, it meets the footprint requirements of, of the zoning code. And, and I, 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 I don't feel that if I meet the zoning code, I should be not allowed to build a building. I, I came to the Board of Appeal to see if I could get the solarium. For, I think, I, I want that for the benefit of the people that are in there, but as far as the building is concerned, it is not too big for the, for the lots, a two-acre lot, and it, it meets the dimensional requirements of the zoning code. It meets the setback requirements, it meets the height requirements. The tower, again, to make a building that doesn't look good because someone doesn't feel like I'm, I'm doing the right thing, I don't think that's good for the town. So, I, I agree that the town would, would like a building that looks good and I think we've done that as far as the height variance and the setback variance. It'll be quite easy to meet the requirements of the zoning bylaws and not have the variance that I, that I am seeking. But I, I don't, I don't think, what, what I'd like to do, what I, what I get from this thing is I'd, I'd like to, I feel that with Captain, Captain Smith's input, I, I agree with that. There is no place for an ambulance there. I can see a spot where I could put it and now I, you know, there's more to talk to him about. My main concern is the Wareham Fire Department. It's a public safety issue and if the, the site plan is able to be put together finally, I'd like to submit it to the town and, and see what happens.
All right, all right, so.
I have new questions.
Go ahead. What's that, Jimmy?
I have, I have new questions.
Go ahead.
Because I'm not real nimble at grabbing the bylaws and looking up setbacks and lot coverage and all that. I, I just want to be clear. Am I hearing that if we eliminated the solarium, the four-story building, the number of rooms, number of occupants, the number of parking spaces, the amount of impervious coverage, everything, et cetera, et cetera, meets zoning, the only variance, the only true variance that we're looking at as a board at this point is height? Is that correct or incorrect?
Correct. And, and the shed which I proposed, let's forget the shed, let's concentrate on.
I'm not worried, the shed's not, the shed's not the focus of my.
Right, right. So, you're absolutely right, Jim.
So, so, okay. So, from a business, I'm just trying to look at this like a businessman. It's going to put up a building and he's going to invest, you know, three or four hundred dollars, maybe almost a thousand, I guess, to build this. Maybe, maybe it'll be more than that. I don't know. It seems like it might be a lot of money to build this building. Maybe it'll be a thousand, five hundred, something like that. But it seems to me if I'm a businessman and I'm spending all that money and I have to choose between twenty or thirty rents and a solarium, I'm going to elect to have the rent and not have the solarium. Because that's twenty times, or twenty more rents that I can collect and I'm, I'm doing this. The prime objective, I believe, when you're in business is to make a profit. I don't think anybody goes in business to lose money, so if I have to choose between putting a nice solarium on the roof and making my people happy or getting twenty more rents, I'd go for twenty more rents. So, I kind of think that we're looking at, we're telling this guy, go ahead, build to the maximum amount you can and forget making it nice for the people. That's the way, that's what I'm hearing. But, and, and maybe I'm just sticking up for the guy and I'm birking people, but that's just the way I'm seeing it. That's enough.
All right, so let me, let me explain a little bit how the law, the bylaw works as much as I can. Jimmy explained it perfectly. This gentleman could go out, get a, get a special permit, becomes a special permit without the solarium. He comes to us, we say no, he goes to court, absolutely he'll win. It's a special permit. It's allowed use. He comes back, put the building. A variance, we say no to the, no to solarium, he goes to court, he'll lose. So, this is, this is what's before us. A building without the solarium, it's his, he can't build it. So, it becomes, the point becomes just like Jim explained, would you like to see it pretty with the solarium? And will lights and people enjoy it, whatever you say it is or not? This is the question that you have to think about. This is the matter before us. I mean, at the end, if it's going to become, if it's that your answer, I'm, I'm sure the gentleman, he's a businessman, he's going to make a decision which way he's going to go. I mean, I don't know if we're going to keep, continue, it's, it's already eight, we're still in this hearing and we have a couple of, one big one at least coming up. You guys want to keep discussing it, go sleep on it? What do you guys want to do?
This is Chris. I'm very, I'm very surprised there's not more people from the public here. Because there were a lot of people at the first meeting. And like I said, I thought it was going to be next week and I think a lot of people, I, I would like to postpone it till, till next week is what I would like.
Okay. Veronica?
I'm fine with that. I mean, I think, I think, I understand it's a business and he has to make a decision based on that. And it just happens that this project, the, the added, the bonuses to the residents all happen to be on the roof and part of the, the requested variance, which is unfortunate.
Right.
I, and, but, but, but also, you know, we're talking about the solarium, the height of the solarium, and then there are other structures to either side of the, the solarium or whatever for the elevator or whatever the reason is and they're, they're also extremely high. If that solarium were lowered and so wouldn't be a solarium, I don't know. I mean, it's like no change, there's nothing other than changing the look of the building. None of the structure has been changed despite repeated meetings and discussions on the height and doing things about the height. So, I mean, I, he has to make his decision and I think, you know, maybe we can think about, you know, moving forward and trying to get it so that both, you know, the town and Mr. Mannix are, get the, are satisfied, I guess.
Well, that, I guess, Mr. Mannix, I guess, Mr. Mannix could speak for himself, but he's going to say, he's going to make a decision. He's going to say, well, I, I, I don't want to speak for the gentleman, but I know how businessmen would think. Mr. Sample, what do you think?
Like to see it moved out to the next meeting also.
All right, why don't we do this and everybody sleep on it? Good idea. Is that all right, Mr. Mannix?
If, if I'm hearing you correctly, you'd like to have this meeting to discuss this further. That, I'm fine. I don't want to take the whole night up. I think I've made my, I think I've made my point clear with the, with the drawings and, and a way of thinking. And I, I do want to know what the town thinks. Obviously, there's many, many other uses that could be contemplated here. But I, I started this project a few years before. It's taken a while to get to this. I thought I was working closely with the town and, and trying to figure out what the town needed. And I, I, I haven't changed my mind on that. I think the town does need this kind of assisted living facility. I think the present one that's in town is, is full. So, I think there's a need and, and the only thing I thought of was I'd, I'd make it a, an amenity. It's, it's not an income generating solarium. It, it doesn't, I, I don't think it would change anything to the people except make it nicer. That, that's the, there's a lot of things. I mean, everybody puts curtains on their windows at their house to make it look nicer. I don't know how you need them so much, maybe for privacy, but it doesn't do anything for the window. It just makes it look better. And, and I, I think that living in a, in a place like this with a solarium would be good. And Veronica, I, I, I see what you're saying, but if the solarium, I think I made a wise guy comment way back that if they put the solarium in the basement, it wouldn't work as well. And, and putting the solarium, not having the, the glass area to get the sun to come in properly, it wouldn't work as well. So, it'd be, it would be something that we put up there. Everybody would be kind of compromised and giving me a variance to, to build a building that's higher than you, than you would like. And then nobody's going to use the solarium. I, I, and I'm not, I wouldn't not build it for spite. I just, I couldn't build it any differently because that's, that's a design issue. A solarium is a certain design. The sun is the sun, the earth is the earth. I can't change it, you can't change it. So, we have to adapt to the, the way you have to design a solarium. And that's all I have to say on that. I don't want to, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I think you get the point.
Let everybody sleep on it until the thirteen and everybody can weigh that option. Can we have a motion to continue to the thirteen?
So be it.
Okay, I have a second.
I second, Chris Conti.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Jimmy, aye.
Aye, Chris Conti.
Aye.
Aye, Rick Sample.
And Nazir Akalasi, aye. Very good. Ken, a quick question. We continue Oak Hill Councilor Jillian Morton. When did we continue Oak Hill to twenty-seven or thirteen?
The twenty-seventh, Sonya said that the thirteenth was kind of booked up.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know if Ken wants to check with her regarding this one as well, but that was a heavy docket for next week.
Yeah, thirteenth has a lot of hearings on it, new ones, and so we extended it to the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
All right, very good. All right, let's move forward. Twenty-seven, the continued publicating, twenty-seven dash twenty, Penrose LLC, the, no, no, sorry, wrong one. Twenty-seven dash twenty, J C M A Realty, John Solerno on one sixty-nine, answer that. Publicating still open, just your name, counselor.
Hi there, it's attorney Jillian Morton. We are here again continuing this hearing for the two family next to the Glen Cove Hotel. We haven't submitted anything new, everything's still the same. And we're kind of, you know, if we're going to talk about parking, we're going to just hit it right head on. Because it's really important that I know that this is a huge concern for the community and so does Mr. Solerno. And that frankly, this again was approved back in that site plan for the hotel, that two family is on that, that site plan. Another thing we wanted to talk about, obviously, there's opposition from the abutters and businesses nearby. The same arguments that are kind of getting used against us now were used in those when they wanted their build. So, something that's really important to us is that we're not getting penalized now as kind of last one to the, to the plate to be able to build this two family, which is not an additional business. Mr. Solerno is going to live in one of the units and it's already, the parking's already allotted. So, I know there will be probably discussion about that, but the arguments that were used for the other abutters saying it's a walking village, you know, it's the same applies to us. Those cars that are parked in front of the abutters lots, which I can totally sympathize with that as a lifelong Wareham resident, understanding the parking situation down there. This two family will not create that substantial detriment. So, we're happy to respond to any of the other abutters or what they want to say and hear what the board has to say as well.
All right. Let's, let's start with Veronica quick. It's getting late, so as far, as fast as we can, please.
I, I don't really have anything additional to add that we had from last week, the last time that we met. Just, you know, parking is the issue and I think the design of the building is beautiful. But the four parking spaces that are on this lot, correct me if I'm wrong, those four spaces were allotted to the hotel, were they not?
No.
No, in the plan.
He's a part of this lot. I checked. It belongs to this lot. It just happened, the hotel's been using them. I, I drove there probably twenty times and looked at, and looked at, look at the plan. And this is a lot, if you look at the planning board one day, granted them the four parking lot, go with that, with that lot.
And the fifteen go to the hotel.
Veronica, want to continue? Are you good?
No, no, that's all I had to say.
All right, Richard?
I don't have anything to say at this time.
Mr. Conti?
Could I say something?
Yeah, one second, one second, you got to wait.
Okay, so, so I, I agree. I think it's a beautiful looking building. I think it'll look great in that spot. I mean, by right, everybody says he, he can build, what, thirteen fifty square foot home there by right? But I think that would be more detrimental to the neighborhood, the way it looks and, and whatnot. I mean, it, it has a nice look there in, in onset and, and to me, that, that's all I have to say, I guess, with it. I think it, it looked pretty good. That that's all I have to say, I guess, with it, I think it it looked pretty good.
Okay, Jimmy. Jimmy. Okay, where Jim go, he's offline, uh, I wanna I wanna. Put my input, just keep in mind that this lot is a is a grandfather lot for the duplex. And we are here not to grant a second unit, we here to grant. A variance if the board wishes for the size. To make the size bigger than what's uh what's allowed, so instead of being seven hundred square feet, the first floor, it will be. I think twelve hundred is asking, or eleven fifty. So, and it's two story building, I drove there many, many times. And to be honest with you, if you make that building small smaller than this, it's gonna look so odd and.
Doesn't matter, it's what.
Ma'am, ma'am, let me finish, so. This is my opinion, I am my, I'm I'm for just, uh, my opinion, I'm for the way it's presented. And now I wanna pass it to the public, who would like to speak, state your name for the record. Who would like to speak?
Uh, my name is Walt Finnerman, my wife Rhonda and I live at sixteen A Ocean Avenue behind the building.
Yes, sir.
Behind a hotel, and, um. The the comment regarding the parking, just, I know we talked a lot about it the last month, last month. But when the property was acquired by Mister Solerno. The lot where he wants to propose the building was a vacant lot, there was a pool there. Uh, and it's okay that he filled it in, there's no problem there. But to say, but the parking for that property. Didn't include anything to be built beyond what was there when he bought it. So anything that is added to the to the building, and this is in addition to the building in theory, it may not, it may be separated, but it also could have been attached. Does require more parking and or variance for the parking that is not being required, and that doesn't make sense.
I I I could answer you to this question, this is a separate law, and it's a grandfather law. So it it's, I mean, although it seems that it was combined with the hotel, but it's not. This is the, that's the legality part of it. So we're not creating parking for it, it hasn't.
Well, the access to the access to this lot is through the hotel. And the parking that occupants of that house will will utilize will be parking that is on the hotel property.
If I may, uh, Chairman, um, just respond to the comments. Um, I think that it's really important, again, we're going by the mil- building commissioner, Mr. Aquina's denial letter, which is the F A R. So if there was something with a parking, of course, we would have at that point been able to come to you guys for that variance. Um, so it's just not applicable in this instance, again, we go by the building commissioner and and what he decides there.
So, did did that answer everyone's question, so what we hear here only before us. It's the F A R, then that that it's got the legal frontage, the footage, it's got the parking, so we cannot. We cannot act on something is not, is not an issue.
But the building size is.
Well, well, I I I, it it seems like parking for the house is an issue. Because, again, the parking lot, the the house, the four occupants or the two occupants of each lot, of each. Lot, uh, unit, whether it's two or four, I mean, whether it's one or two units, at this point has been determined, but let's say it's two. They'll park it, they're gonna be parking on parking lot that is now utilized by the either hotel or restaurant patrons. Am I correct?
Well, we cannot. Like predict, the law says two bedroom house get one and a half parking can or two. Two and a half, uh, two bedroom apartment, what's the bylaw calls for one and a half park? Or two parking, counselor?
Believe it's two, I can double check, I know we have four spots allotted.
I think it's two also.
What's that?
Two.
Two, so that, so, right now. The 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 bylaws has two bedrooms, two parking, so they have two units at two bedrooms, so that's four bedroom, four parking, which they have. Now. We cannot predict, I mean, you're supposed to go sixty five on the highway, you can't say, well, you have a Ferrari, you're gonna go one hundred. Do you know what I'm saying? So it it it's not what before us, like the attorney says, what before us is the F A R. Not the parking, not the frontage, not the square square footage of the lot.
It is though, how much, how big the house could be on that lot.
That's what before us, how big the house.
Question.
Right, one second Veronica, yes ma'am, that's what before us, that's the square footage of the house, not the parking.
Correct, and you can make a nice home with the square footage, uh, as allotted. And that would take care of what, two spaces of the parking, you wouldn't have four.
You're going back to the parking, that's the problem.
Parking, let's go to the build, back to the building, the building was, what, it's supposed to be twelve hundred square feet, it should be kept that.
All right, let me ask you a quick question, so you're most concerned. That's gonna be more more people parking, right?
Correct, because, but you wanna talk about parking.
I get my answer, that's that's the problem, we're not here for that, I'm gonna pass to Veronica, please, I'll get back to you, let me listen, Veronica, go ahead, Veronica.
What's the current height of the proposed? Project?
Uh, I can't read it.
I can't read it.
Can you answer that for us? I have the plans, but the architect is here.
I'm just gonna pull it up.
Great.
Oh, Anthony, there, okay, you could pull it up.
Uh, yeah, it's a. It's below the building height maximum, uh, to the ridge, it's thirty two feet, thirty two nine.
That's it?
So. To the, to the ridge.
Okay, thank you, um. I would be more inclined to grant a variance for increased height. And increase the square footage that you have in that building if you were to make the footprint. Smaller in order to create parking. I know you like the look of that building, if somehow. It could be changed to 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 leave more, um. Area to have parking. Or even underneath it, you know, create an area that is. Open underneath to have some kind of parking and and increase the height of the building, I would be much more inclined to grant that, because then that issue is is solved.
No, we we keep, we keep going back and forth to parking, that's not.
Because that's the issue, otherwise, I I, it's it's not an issue when you don't want to be, but that's, that's what the issue is, keep it at thirteen fifty, and then more parking isn't an issue for more residents. Increasing the size of the property increases the amount of people who live there, which increases the amount of vehicles, which increases the need for more parking, so. Let's, everybody's clear on what's the issue.
Well, ma'am, ma'am, listen, if I gotta, I gotta tell you, last time we had complaints, people talking about over each other. If you're gonna do this, I'm gonna have the our host to shut shut your screen. I wanted to listen, listen to our commissioner, Mister Aquina, cuz last time he corrected me, and he was right, so he's the professional with the codes and stuff, David.
How you doing, Mister Chairman? If if I could, I could just have, um, either Ken or Anthony bring up the site plan for that property.
I can bring one up.
Okay.
Where is he?
Uh, just a second. You see that?
Yep. David.
Move a little bit on that, Anthony, on that back parking section.
Sure, just a minute.
Is there a reason why it doesn't show the parking spaces?
Who's speaking?
Uh, the park, the parking spaces are shown, just a minute.
One other time, sir, right now, we, you're not allowed to speak, just the commissioner and the architect, go ahead, David. Or.
If you look at the map, where it says map one A lot A. Just to the right of that, there's a dark line. Okay, that's the property boundary for map one lot B. If you look in in that area, that's a little bit darker, those four parking spaces are on this property. This is a conforming parcel on its own with its own parking. You can't penalize this property because another property is lacking its own park. This property has its own independent parking spaces, whether it accesses through another. Or not is an easement issue and not part of this this application. This property has parking, it's a conforming lot. The only question, the only nonconformity, the only issue in this application is F A R. The height. It it is all compliant, everything else is compliant, except for the floor area ratio of the building, that's all.
That's my case, Veronica.
If you wanna get technical, the only reason to grant a variance is for, um. A land hardship. So then the answer should be no from everybody.
I I have a question.
I saw, okay, wait, Mister.
Veronica is correct on that.
Yes.
Veronica is correct on everything she has said.
Who's be, our counselor.
This is attorney Barry Mazzie.
Yes, well, just one other time, that's very good Veronica, that's your opinion, thank you, Mister Counselor Perry, would you like to speak?
Yes, I would, I would, although I'm only gonna reiterate what I said last time, you cannot, under the statute, forty eight, chapter ten, uh, section ten. Vary F A R, that's all to restore, there's no basis when you look at. What the statute says, and that's what Veronica just told you, and as a matter of fact, Veronica is entirely correct in that traffic and parking are a serious problem, you look at the bylaw. Traffic and congestion in the streets is one of the things the bylaw is intended to deal with. And if you permit this building and add parking, you've got the extra traffic in the streets, and you're in violation of the intent of the bylaw, which once again. Is set forth in forty eight, section ten. If you would have granted variance on this and permit the. Building of about twenty five hundred square feet versus the twelve fifty, which is what's allowed under the F A R. It would be an illegal variance and would be overturned, just as Nazzy said on the last case. So I I guess I reiterate what I said last time, and I suggest you cannot grant. This variance at all, as a matter of law. Pretty much what I've got.
I'd love to respond to that, Chairman, if you.
If if I may, with all due respect, counselor, each property has its own merit, and the and the board have. With all due respect, have the power to grant or not grant the variance, if somebody agrees with the decision. That they know what to do, go ahead, Counselor Morton.
Um, I would like to disagree, um, with board member, um, Veronica and Attorney Perry, you can, F A R is, you can get a variance on it. There's no prohibit prohibiting that within the statute, that's just not true. Um, this lot, as we know, was on the bluff. There is, uh, topographical reasons of why we are seeking the variance. Um, so, I mean, if that, they're gonna fight that, I would be happy to fight that legally. Um, you know, I understand, you know, Veronica said in the other meeting that she had her boat over at Stonebridge. So she understands the parking and the issues over there, and they've gone through great lengths when they've added the deck and things like that. We're just seeking to do something that's already been approved through the planning board. For a two family, if if you all remember, there was the tiki bar there before, now there was some parking issues there. Right now, we're looking to do a two family that by right we can do, just with the extension of F A R, that's what in front, what's in front of you.
All right.
Can I ask a question?
One, one other.
I'd say I'd like to respond to that also.
Go ahead, counselor, let the counselor serve it up, go ahead.
I'm waiting.
If you're talking about. The fact that that property is up on the bluff. As being something that topographically. Affects generally the zoning, uh, the this property, but not generally the zoning district, that's nonsense. And there's no way in the world, anything topographical. Can possibly affect. F A R. It it's just nonsense to suggest that.
Well, I disagree with you, thank you.
Uh, we're not gonna argue, like.
No, I'm not gonna go back, we're going over the same things we talked about last time.
Uh, can I ask a question?
We got your message, we got, I got your message, go ahead, Mister Ron does iPad, go ahead.
That's okay, there are four lots, four parking spaces supposedly on that lot where the. One or two family is proposed. Are are they, is there an existing parking lot for those four right now, or is that to be built upon, uh, construction?
They're existing. It looks to me on the plan existing.
So they're part of the seventeen unit lots, seventeen space.
No, no, they they look like this, but they're not legally, they're not.
Well, if you walk the parking slot and count it.
I did walk it.
You're saying there's more than seventeen, or the seventeen includes that?
I I don't know, I.
There's nineteen.
Nineteen, I guess.
Okay.
All right, Veronica, you, I know you wanna say something, so.
Well, I just, I don't wanna keep going around in circles, I just. I would just like to see the building changed, so but it can allow for some. For additional parking, even though parking's not what we're here for, that would. That. Sways my vote or my opinion, um, for this property, cuz obviously we have to take all of. The. What's affected by this building into consideration. And, um. The only other thing that I wanted to make a comment on is, and everybody keeps saying that the planning board approved this for a two family. Um. Did they state that in their language that this is approved for a two family, because, and the only reason I say this is. A two family at twelve hundred and fifty square feet, I don't think that would be allowed, because isn't it six hundred and fifty square feet of?
It was prior to the change in the code.
It doesn't matter, six hundred without ba- without bathrooms.
Okay. But anyway.
It wouldn't be a legal house. If it didn't have bathrooms, it wouldn't be a legal house, it doesn't make sense.
Right, but the bathroom could be.
I mean, you don't.
Twenty five, you're still under the code.
So I I would just say that the planning board approved it with a a a a building that could be put there for the size. That was allowed, which is twelve fifty, right, so they didn't necessarily approve a two family, they approved a residence.
Okay, let me.
I'm not even sure that's correct.
Let me, let me say, just for the heck of it, how about if, let's say this gentleman go builds a house with eight bedrooms. Now what do we do? One kitchen, two bathroom and eight bedrooms. One.
Then it's a rooming house.
No, it's a house.
No, he can do that, as long as it's twelve hundred and fifty square feet or less.
Yeah, he could do this, and just as, just a figure of speech, Jim, are you there?
I am, I'm back.
All right, so let's let's hear from you, we haven't heard you.
Well, um. My first observation in listening to all parties involved. My first observation, I'm looking at the screen that's being shared. And it would seem. There'd be some, there's some detriment to the way this is presented, I see this dark gray area. And I think what that's pointing out is the parking lot for. An abutting property and the impacking lot is including. You know, so what I'm, my point that I'm trying to make is. If this particular lot. Were shaded, let's say, yellow or orange or red or whatever, without that dark gray encroaching on it. It would, it would look a little different than it looks right now. So I'm not sure people are seeing the actual property lines of this property. Or whether they want to.
The commissioner showed that when you crashed, the commissioner showed it.
Oh, oh, well. You know, I'm always late to the party, and I'm a party crasher, sorry I cry, I don't know what.
We saved the drink for you, the drinks was.
I wasn't drinking, yeah. But.
Mister said, again, sorry.
I wonder. I wonder. It's floor area ratio. Is that, that's the whole, this whole argument boils down to floor area ratio, if I'm listening and hearing everything correct.
Yes.
And and the current proposed. Two family has a greater floor area ratio than the zoning bylaw allows. Um, I hate, you know, and I hate, I hate to, I almost don't wanna say what I'm about to say, but. So what stops this applicant? From building one story with a floor area ratio. It's equal to the footprint he wants right now and coming back next year and asking to put a second story on that building. And and everybody's gonna go, oh, yeah, I didn't, I mean, it's, I I don't know, it just seems to me like. People are afraid of change and and this is gonna be, this house is almost gonna look silly. If we make him put a single family in amongst all those other, everything in the neighborhood is bigger, a red along the bluff by. I looked at when I drove down the street, it just, it doesn't look out of proportion to me, it doesn't look to me. By telling this guy you can't have a two family. That you're gonna increase the parking, you're not gonna create one more parking spot in the neighborhood, I don't know what the goal is here. By stopping this man. Um, if if they were, if they were saying, yeah, we're gonna take your property by adverse possession, and we're gonna put six more cars there and. and we're going to put six more cars there and leave parking, I'd hear the argument, but I don't see how I don't see how we're helping the situation. There's a bad situation, but I don't see how this makes it worse. That's what I don't see. I'm so that's.
Are you good, Jimmy?
I'm good.
Mister Sample, you have a comment?
No comment at this time.
Mister Conti.
Well, yeah, I agree with with Jim too. You know, I think anything smaller than what they proposed would um look look funny in that whole neighborhood. I think I think the building that they proposed, I'm fine with it. I think it's going to look great. I think it's going to be a great addition to that neighborhood.
All right, uh. Okay.
If I may say, Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
A twelve hundred and fifty square foot uh, unit on one level with a pitch roof is not doesn't is not small at all. Most apartments are eight hundred, nine hundred square feet. A lot of houses, granted, are maybe eighteen hundred, twenty two hundred square feet, depending on the size of the house. A lot are larger, but some are smaller. But a twelve hundred square foot house, I don't think will will look out of place if the design is right.
May I say something? As well from the public, Dave Morrow, fourteen B Ocean Ave.
Yes.
Again, this is not my area of expertise. I'm a member of the I'm a member of the neighborhood. I've listened to this. They've been granted a twelve hundred, give or take, building ability, and you're asking for double. And I don't see any hardship between getting the okay for twelve hundred, but I need to double it. And I agree with the prior speaker that a properly constructed twelve hundred foot home, which has been approved, can look very tastefully placed in that lot. But we're asking for double and there's no hardship on record to drive the approval of doubling that that property. Thank you.
Two families, that's why.
All right. It's actually, I looked at it. It's not it's pretty. It's like eleven hundred fifty square feet, but you're going to take the porches. That square footage of the house is actually a lot less. Uh, eighty eighty eight years probably is about end up being like nine hundred fifty square feet. And am I right?
Uh, the gross footprint is one thousand three hundred and sixty square feet. Uh, we eliminated.
That's with the porches.
Uh, no, the gross footprint of the building. This porch has been eliminated as has this porch. I don't know if you can see my cursor.
Yeah.
Uh, so this porch was eliminated and this porch was eliminated. This bump out is an egress stair.
Right.
This bump out is an egress stair. So the two bedroom unit is thirty two feet in this direction and thirty six feet in this direction. So each two bedroom unit, uh, which is all on one story living is one thousand one hundred and fifty two square feet.
All right, thank you. Uh. All right, it's getting late again. So uh, I'm gonna start, Jim, what's just what you what what are you? What's your recommendation on this? How which way are you swaying?
Um, I don't have a problem granting the relief. I I that's what I that's the way I feel.
All right, Jim, Richard.
I believe that the house will definitely fit in well. The the F A R on the on that end to make it bigger. I think the house would fit better instead of a little house like it's all been discussed. I think the size house that was originally there, size that they're putting back in, the old pitches from the back in the day, it all seems like it's all going back to where it was, other than the fact that the F A R isn't being allowed, but I'm all for this.
Okay, very well. I'm sorry, Rich, to cut you short. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Richard. Uh, Chris.
Just getting away.
Yeah.
I'm in agreement with this. I'm in agreement with it.
All right, well, one last guy. Anyone from the public want to comment still on that before we close?
I'd like to speak. My name is Teresa Capitoni. I'm at sixteen Ocean Ave.
Yes.
From the get go, from the beginning of the meeting from last week, it was painfully obvious um of of the approval of this without any before the discussion even started. So I'm trying to educate myself on how these things work, but asking for twice for fifty two percent more than than what your bylaws have established um with nothing, none of the arguments are relevant to all I've heard is he's a nice guy, the house will look nice, I like it. None of that is relevant to the fact that you have established a bylaw. So you tell me, other than that, you think the house is pretty, why you're going to grant that? I live in an eleven hundred square foot house. It's plenty big enough. So it's irrelevant. Your arguments are irrelevant to your bylaw. So why do you establish a bylaw if you're not going to uphold it? So there there's what I want to know as a resident is give me solid grounds for why you're granting a variance, not because you like the house, not because he owns Nana's ice cream shop. And I'd also like to say, as a fellow business owner, a successful business person, he's a successful business person. Mr. Son, with success comes responsibility. You have a responsibility to this neighborhood to keep your patrons from interfering with our peaceful existence. It's as simple as hiring a parking attendant to make sure that they're not parking on our property, that they're not stumbling drunk, parking kitty corner on the telephone poles. You have a responsibility as a business person in this town, and you have not taken that responsibility seriously. And if you had from the get go, and if you would come into this with any consideration for your neighbors, you may not be meeting with so much.
Ma'am, I gotta stop you. This isn't the social service.
This is not a social circle, but there's a lot more to this than meets the eye.
That that's not how.
So that's okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. This, okay, this is um, I'm 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 I hope you nobody takes it personal, but that's not a place to discipline people. We don't go by discipline here.
Veronica, she she said, well, I mean, there's nothing.
That's fine, but.
I'm not disciplining. I'm saying that this is an all encompassing situation.
This is basically.
All encompassing situation.
Time out, time out. We're not going to discuss it anymore. Anyone else?
Any legal reasons why you're granting variance?
Move to close. I can have a motion to close.
I would from the public.
Sir, it's it's can I have a motion to close, please?
Oh, Nazzy, I think I think we need to let the public vent their frustrations.
You're going off the subject. Now she's gonna tell me he makes fights or he drinks or whatever. Sir, bad Mr. Morrow.
Okay, so just to segue off of Teresa's comment that what is the what is the reasoning to grant the variance other than we all seem to like the plan?
Okay, who are you asking? You gotta which member you asking?
I'm asking, it feels like the zoning board is going to say yes.
Right, but specific person to answer you. We can't answer five at the same time. Who would you like to answer? Richard, myself, sir?
We ask you, Mr. Chairman, to give us the logic behind the potential approval for the variance.
I'm gonna give you the logic of my opinion. I can't speak for the board. This is my opinion, only solely my opinion, okay? Not the board. Only the board speaks as a vote. So my opinion as a person, I think the logic, if it's good on the property, if we are to go smaller, I don't think it looks good. And to take away a unit from him, he we that's taking away his right. This is my opinion. It don't mean anything. Who else would you like to speak to answer you? Would you? Who would you like to answer? Jim, Veronica?
I would like to hear Veronica's opinion.
Veronica, what's your opinion?
Say it again.
Sir, please.
I'm not for it, so I've already given my opinion. I.
She's not for it. Is that good enough? Is that good enough, her opinion? Would you like to? Okay, who else you'd like to direct the question to?
Well, I appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to ask.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to ask a question and a board member? We keep saying you guys, you guys, specific the person to give you an answer. Who would you like to talk to? Okay, is that good, Jim?
I have a well. I have one more concern. Because we've heard now I learned a long time ago, when you get expert testimony in courtroom, the two experts can argue for a long time, especially if they're getting paid by the hour. Um, but um my my current my current thoughts are let's play devil's advocate a little bit here. Let's say the board votes and be it unanimously or in majority or let's say we approve or we grant relief. Attorney Perry's sitting here listening, his neighbors sitting here listening. If they go and appeal our decision, which they have the right to do, it drags the thing out even further. Is there is there any chance that if they appeal our decision, the court will overrule our decision?
Yes.
And I'd say yes.
Right.
So.
Yes.
So again, um, I guess I'm turning, I'm I'm now I'm asking a question of the neighbors and of the attorney that's representing somebody. Um, is it is it the intention of the neighborhood, no matter how if we vote in favor of this app applicant or if we vote in favor of this appeal, is the neighborhood just going to pool their money and go fight them and take their twenty days to say we object and?
Can I answer that?
I mean, we cannot speak for intentions.
Can I answer that?
Speak for themselves. Yes.
Well, I'll ask Bob I'll ask Bob Perry to answer that then.
I I represent several people there in the neighborhood, as a matter of fact. And the answer is, if this board cannot specifically find the something related to the soil conditions, the shape of the lot, or the topography of the land that's particular to this piece of property, in other words, you can't make the specific findings you have to make under section ten of the state statute forty eight, then the answer is absolutely the neighbors will pull and file a case in the Superior Court attacking whatever you do.
Okay.
That a good enough answer?
Yes.
That answers my question. I I wanted I wanted the applicant to hear that answer.
Can I uh, can I say something?
Yes, Mister and my John.
I'm I'm trying to be a good neighbor. I don't I'm I don't understand what's kind of happening here. I'm a little I really am a little confused. Um. All I know is when John went for his um.
John, can I interrupt you?
Johnny.
Johnny.
Yes.
Can I interrupt you?
Yes.
It's getting to a point of becoming only legal speaking, so let's not say he said and she said.
No, I'm not saying that.
I would like you to answer the question. I listen, we we all have our good things and bad things. We all do mistakes. And I argue, we're not going to go back in the past what you need.
No, I know.
But let's answer Jim's question. That's very important for you to answer this question. Did you hear what Jim asked you?
No, what did he ask me?
Jimmy, answer him again.
Well, my my question to you is, did you hear Attorney Perry's response to my prior question? Do you realize that if you're granted relief, it's it appears to me it's going to do you little or no good because our decision is going to be appealed. It's going to go to court. The town's going to send their attorney to court to try to stick up for the board. But historically, when these things are challenged in the court, the court goes with the with the zoning bylaw and they'll overturn our decision. So it seems it 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 just appears to me at this point that you might be fighting, I won't call it an uphill battle. I'd say you can't surmount it.
Uh, Chairman, may I say something?
Sir, no, one second. So John, with the with Jim is telling you.
I understand.
I think we should continue this and discuss with your attorney what you want to do. Or we could close the meeting. We have forty five. Well, actually, we should I would rather make the 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 decision publicly. So would you like to continue this for next hearing and you discuss with your attorney?
Um, yeah.
Do you advise this, Counselor Moore? Or do you want to hear?
Can I take five minutes to discuss my client private?
Excuse me?
Can I take five minutes offline?
Yes, we're gonna push you table you to the end and we're going to the other hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Let's table this to the end. We're gonna jump to the other hearing. Thirty dash twenty Pendros LLC comprehensive permit for Littleton Drive. And the public hearing is still open. Who do we have here from Pendros?
If I understand correctly, I thought Littleton Drive was to be continued.
That's what I saw too, but I guess maybe they're asking for continuous. Mister Kirok? Kirok, Kip Coffee, Kirov?
Yes, hi, we, Mr. Chairman, we have our whole team here and.
Okay, so one one second, sir. I guess Jim was not continued. I thought it was going to be continued.
I was under, yeah, well, I'll 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 ask Ken to pipe in here a little bit. Um, I'm not sure, you know, Facebook information is a is about reliable as the wind and the weather. So I don't want to depend on Facebook, but on Facebook I did observe or read uh public comments that they felt as though Littleton Drive was being held in front of Conservation and Zoning Board at the same time. Is that correct or incorrect?
The schedule of the Conservation Commission included on the agenda tonight, the the Littleton Project. And it just so happened that what we did, if you remember as a board, you decided to have a another hearing, continued hearing when Nazzy was still in in the states so that he could participate in the in the meeting. So we we scheduled it for the sixth, the same day as the Conservation Commission meeting, and they happened to set the agenda for a hearing as well. This does not mean that people can't have comments on both applications. Uh, both the hearings are are being continued and allowing people to have input at all times during the interim between the hearings, people can submit comments to the my office and we will include them in the file and and post them on online.
So is it is it?
As possible for people to have participation.
Is it is it fair to assume that it would be? I don't want to say impossible, but improbable for the applicant to be speaking with Conservation and Zoning Board simultaneously. Would they have been heard by one board at one point and another board at another point? Or do they have um, do they have two people going to two different boards simultaneously?
They have a big team. I think they can explain on their own how they distributed the responsibility for the hearings.
But nonetheless, anybody from the public that's aggrieved or has a comment will still have that a comment period afforded to them at future meetings, either board.
Nazzy, can I make a comment?
Who's asking to comment?
Alan Slaven Selectman.
Yes, Alan.
Except except to Nazzy.
Go ahead.
Uh, just so you know, the Conservation Commission did meet and they basically moved the Littleton Drive to another date.
Twenty.
Okay, so I I so I'm I'm so I guess they continue at the different date and here they are. And the only thing is, I know Captain Smith wanted to participate. Can is it possible you could text him? Or do you want me to do so?
Captain Smith submitted a letter that I can read into the record.
Okay, all right, very good. Let's start with the hearing. So public hearing still open. The applicant, if you could state your name and start.
Sure, this is this is Charlie Adams. Thank you for having us back. Sorry, I just joined a little bit late here. I just picked up the last part of the conversation. Just to clarify, you know, we're we're trying to get input from everybody as much as we can and to make sure that that all the different groups are aligned. Um, and so anything that happens in that committee also happens here and back and forth. Um, we want to make sure that we're designing it in a way that's respectful of of all the various regulations and bylaws in the town so that we do it, do it, do it the way that the town wants it. Um, so, um, and we do have a split. We do have a big team. We were able to have some folks go to that meeting as well as attend this one. And and as you heard, that actually has gotten moved as well. So now we're all here for this one. Um, and from our last meeting, you had asked us to follow up on a bunch of things. We spent the last couple of weeks pulling stuff together. We can go through that information now if you'd like. Um, in particular, we, well, we already have the traffic study, but so you've got that. We have we were happy to go through that. Uh, you asked us to do some additional work on the site drainage plan. Uh, Horsey Witness done a really great job of trying to come up with a stormwater management plan. I think we got to a good place. Uh, we've continued to have conversations or tried to advance work with the Sewer Commission. And I know we're trying to to get in touch with them and working on that. Um, we had set up an account to get a peer reviewer, so that's in motion. Um, and we've refined some additional landscaping plans, some other things, all of which you should have. You should have a big packet of information that's the the latest and greatest of all those things that I mentioned. You should have a big packet of information that's the, the latest and greatest of all those things that I mentioned. And, you know, we're really, we're really defer to you in terms of, you know, what you, you'd like to see. We also put together a list of the waivers that we ultimately would need, so we're happy to share that. We really defer to the board on where you'd like us to start.
All right, let's start. We, we'd like to start with the waivers, Charlie.
Sure. So I'm gonna ask Paul Haverty, who's our attorney representing us, to, to go through them. And then we've got our design and civil team that can weigh in on some of the more specifics of the actual, how they relate to the site plan if needed as well.
Hi, Counselor. How are you? Long time.
Yeah, it's, it's good to see you again and members of the board. So I have actually gone through and updated the proposed waiver list. Did you want me to go through it one by one?
Okay, if you could, can somebody put it up and you could start going through it? Did you, did you say, did you get Charlie anything from the sewer?
So I know that, that Horsey Witten has been working on that. They had put together some plans. I know they were trying to reach Guy last week. He was on vacation. They were, tried to reach him again today. I don't know, Joe or Rich, if you were able to make connections with him today, if you've heard from him? Rich Clayder or Joe?
Yeah, sorry, Charlie. Joe's, Joe's, Joe's also on the line. Mr. Chairman and, and members of the audience, for the record, I'm Rich Clayder, the president of the Horsey Witten Group and the principal in charge for our design team from a civil standpoint. We did put together a, a letter with, for the Sewer Commission with the requested information, the bedroom count, the number of units, the flow numbers, and that has been submitted. We have not heard back from them. We're hopeful to get on the agenda for the fourteenth to be able to present the project and get their feedback.
All right, thank you. Did you get that list, Ken? Did you do, well, can this look, and did you do any water modeling?
What kind of water modeling, sir?
For water pressure, do you discuss with the, with the water?
Yes, the, yeah, the water department, flow tests have been done. We've had communication with the water department. The water department has commented on our plan and given us a suggestion layout, and they've told us they have adequate pressure for the project.
All right, where is that waiver list?
Mr. Chairman, right before you forget, well, there's two other things I wanted to highlight too. We also created a webpage that we can put up on the board for people that want to know more about the, the development. So we have, we create a specific website, and that'll list actually, it, it actually does a couple of things. One, it, it allows people to put their name and information for ultimately when we start leasing, you know, down the road, if they're interested in being there. And we'll also put the dates and things of other meetings and things that we're going to, so the public is, is aware of the things that we're working on. So we can make that available to the group as well. And also the opportunity, I had a couple of conversations with some of Butters during the last couple of weeks and got to talk.
I hope they were productive.
They're very.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have the, I don't have the waiver list in my list of forms that have online available to me.
Counselor, can you go through it? Can you, do you have it, right, Counselor? Paul?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I know how to actually share it, but I'll give it a try.
You don't have to share it. Just go item by item.
Ken, I did email it to you though, just now.
You emailed it to Ken or to me?
I emailed it to Ken. So if he wants to put it up on the screen, that's.
Why'd you get started, Paul? And then if he wants to put it up, we can catch up, and you can start walking through it.
Yep, just get it back up.
And Charlie, it's, this is Jim McAvoy speaking.
Yes.
It, it, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. If you want to share something on the bottom of your screen, when you move your mouse to the bottom, there's a green box. It says share screen, you click on it, and then it, just like going through your files on your computer, you can pick the file, click on it, boom.
I'm really good at doing it. I can't speak for other people, though.
All right, how's that?
Look at that.
Hey, oh, I said challenge.
Congratulations.
All right.
There you go.
Thank you, guys.
Myself. All right, so as you can see, the first few waivers are requested waivers from the Comprehensive Permit Rules and Regulations of the Wareham Board of Appeals. Section three point zero one J, having to do with financial information such as a pro forma. And this is in conflict with seven sixty CMR fifty-six point.
Somebody, one second, Counselor, if somebody's mic, somebody's TV's on. Can, can you shut that screen, Jeffrey?
Ron's iPad needs to shut their mic off.
Sir, Kenny, can you, can you take that screen off? All right, go ahead, Counselor, sorry.
That's okay. So again, the, the requirement for the issuance of a pro forma that is in the board's rules and regulations is not one that's consistent with the DHCD regulations. So we've just requested a waiver of that.
So hold on one second. So we cannot review the, the financial profit?
No, that's not exactly what this means. What it means is that you can't require it to be submitted as part of the initial application. And there are specific circumstances in which a board is allowed to review the, the financial impact, but it's only after the board has issued a proposed decision to the applicant that contains all of the conditions and all of the proposed waiver decisions. And if the applicant at that point in time informs the board that, that that decision renders the project uneconomic, then the board is entitled to conduct a pro forma review to confirm whether or not it agrees with that determination.
So, so why are you asking for a waiver? Why, I mean?
Because, because your rules and regulations require it to be submitted upfront.
I still don't understand why you can't submit it with the application, with the, with the, with the application.
Again, because it's, it's not something that the board is actually allowed to require. This is actually a waiver that.
So why are you asking us a waiver if it's not allowed?
It's really just a formality, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we, I'll have, we'll ask our counsel about it. Let's jump to the second one. So that's three.
Second one is, is another one that is in conflict with regulations, requires the applicant to pay fees for the board's legal counsel. And that's in conflict with seven sixty CMR fifty-six point zero five five, which expressly states legal fees for general representation of the board or other local boards shall not be imposed on an applicant.
Okay, that's, I agree with that. I personally will, I will have the board agree on this, but I personally, okay.
In section three point four zero, I mean, I think we're really already past this i- i- in, in regards to this process. But it was, you know, the applicant requested a waiver to allow peer review deposit to be made as directed by the board during the course of the public hearing, rather than as part of the initial.
So, so the fifty-three G account, you mean, on that one?
Correct. So, so, you know, you've already conducted your peer review. We've already made a payment in regards to that. So this is really, again, just academic.
We, we advanced payment already on that.
I'm, I'm gonna ask board, all the board members, if you guys want to jump in as we go. Son, you could jump in, please do so. I question on these waiver as we go, so we don't have to go back and ask about them. All right, let's, let's continue.
So section three point five, we've requested a waiver with regards to whether the application has been duly submitted. And again, that, that is because the board's rules and regulations require a quantum of information that is different than what is required under the state regulations. So the application, you know, is duly submitted as long as you comply with the state applications. So those are the, the waivers that we've requested with regards to your forty B rules and regulations. And then there are the waivers that have been requested of the Wareham zoning bylaws. So we're looking at Article Three Use Regulations, Section three one one, Committed Uses. And this requires that any uses that are allowed in the zoning district may be approved. And obviously, you know, we're asking for a waiver of that to allow the project as proposed. Section three twenty and three twenty-one, Table of Principal Use Regulations. And the applicant requests a waiver from the requirement prohibiting more than four dwelling units in a structure in the MR thirty zoning district.
Well, let me ask you, Counselor, this goes without saying, these waivers with the forty B, so?
Yes, but, but they are technically, we're, we're required to provide you with a list of waivers that are necessary for the project to be constructed as, as proposed. So your, your zoning bylaw doesn't allow this use in this zoning district. So we're simply requesting a waiver to allow it.
Okay, Kenny, are you in here? I'm sorry, Counselor, Kenny?
Yes.
Now, what happened to an attorney that this, the state chip sent for us to help us like we hired Mr. Haverty before?
We used the, the account that we are allowed under the, under the state law. We could apply for another one.
I mean, yeah, no offense, Counselor, but I'm, I'm not saying you're, you're trying to do something, trick us, but we're not lawyers, so. I mean, we go through it, but apparently we're not gonna vote on this. We have to discuss with the, with our the Selectmen, our, Mr. Buckland, hopefully have some kind of counseling with us, like you were with us before in previous project. You, you recall that, right?
Absolutely, yes.
I mean, this is too much for me personally to digest. I know how forty B works, but I will, I wouldn't want to be the one to say yes, 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 which I don't understand much of that legality. I mean, I know some, but not so much. I'm, I'm sure the rest of the board agree with me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I suggest that myself, Dave Bracina, who is the zoning enforcement officer, and Rich Bowen sit down, go through the list and find whether or not they're appropriate waivers for the zoning bylaw.
Okay, I, I do understand, like, for instance, that allowing more than four units, it goes without saying, but we just don't want to stop our boundaries too much as a board and say yes for it without really understanding.
Sure, and, and Mr. Chairman, to be clear, we've kept our waiver requests as minimal as we could in order to construct the project as it's designed. And we've identified with specificity what those waivers would be. So for instance, in, in the next waiver, Article Four, Overly District, Section four point four, 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 two point one B, you know, not only do we, we don't just ask for it to be waived in a blanket manner. It says that you're not allowed to have impervious surface in excess of fifteen percent or twenty-five hundred square feet. And we're requesting a waiver to allow a maximum coverage of eighteen point one percent. So we are, you know, being very upfront in terms of the exact nature of the waiver requests that are being made. And I'm happy to work, Mr. Buckland and.
Where, where did you, where did you read that? Okay, you make an example of the other waiver you just talked, it's, you don't. Right, okay, I was gonna say, you're not in that zone, okay. All right, let's keep going through it. Well, I'm sure we're gonna have to.
Well, so do we want to go through these one by one, or do we want to have me work with Ken offline?
I, I mean, I think, I think, if I, if I could, I think, Mr. Chairman, I think really what, you know, you're gonna approve a, you and the board together are gonna approve, ultimately approve a site plan, right? And then whatever, whatever you approve, wherever it doesn't conform with current zoning, that's what this, that's what these waivers will, will memorialize. So it, it might make sense.